Good morning everyone. At this time I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting to order and I would like to ask our board members to identify themselves for the record. William Buchanan.
Here.
Katie Addis.
Here.
John Andes.
Here.
William Gordy.
Here.
Elaine McComas.
Here.
And Donald Smack.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Now I need a motion to approve the today's board agenda meeting, meeting agenda and a second.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Smack.
Second.
A second by Mr. Buchanan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And now I need a motion to enter into closed session under general provisions of Article 3-305b of the Annotated Code of Maryland for the following reasons. To approve closed session minutes from the previous month. Section 3-305b 1 to discuss appointment, employment, promotion, assignment, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation or performance evaluation of appointees or employees or officials over whom it has jurisdiction or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Section 3-305b 7 to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice and section 3-305b 10 to discuss school safety. Can I have a motion to enter into closed session and a second?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Smack.
Second.
And a second by Ms. McComas. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in closed session.
Good afternoon, everyone. As we reconvene this Board of Education meeting, I want to remind everyone that we have a quorum. I thank all of you for being here today. If we would all please stand. Before we say the, before we ask Reverend Pugner to do the prayer as well as the pledge of allegiance, unfortunately, this past weekend, we had a, an accident with one of our students who's in critical care. And it's for Tyler Walsh and the Walsh family. We want to have a moment of silence to reflect and pray for the family. And then I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Before we go into the moment of silence, this is never easy when we talk about kids and tragedies. We're all in this business because we love kids and we want to work with kids. And I received a phone call Friday evening at about quarter of 11:00 to say that my heart was in my feet is an understatement. Just going to share briefly, Tyler Walsh is a junior at Stephen Decatur High School. His family has been involved in our school system. Some of you may know this, but two years ago, his mother Rhonda, a teacher at Berlin Intermediate School, succumbed to cancer. And it was very difficult. I know Tyler's father very well. He's an employee at Calvin B. Taylor Bank. And he has had the task of raising his three children with help of some family over the last two years. And then Corey, his father, gets that call Friday evening where his son had been struck in Ocean City by a motorcyclist. He's still battling for his life. And I ask not only today during the moment of silence, but as you leave this place, and I would say this for the 7,000 kids, that I have the responsibility of making sure they have a good education and that their lives are productive. I would ask that anytime we have struggles with young people in this manner, that you keep them in your thoughts and if you so desire, in your prayers. But right now, I would like to take a moment of silence, first for Tyler Walsh and also for Tyler Walsh's family, because this is going to be, one way or another, a long, long recovery process. So I ask this community, both who's online with us and who's sitting here, if we could bow our heads for a moment of silence. Amen. Thank you.
Amen. Thank you, Superintendent. Now we'll do the pledge of allegiance and then we'll ask Reverend Pugner to give the prayer.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you pray with me this afternoon? Our gracious heavenly Father, we take a moment this day to thank you. We want to thank you for your goodness and your grace in our lives. We want to thank you for the privilege of living in this amazing country. We don't pretend for a moment that it's perfect, but we do recognize that we are truly blessed. We left up to you this day, every student, every teacher, every administrator in this great county. We pray your blessings, your knowledge, your safety for all of them. I pray for the school board today. I ask for your guidance, your wisdom, your support as they strive to make good decisions. I pray, God, that you would grant them humility as they seek your will in all their ways and everything that they do and everything that they say. I pray, God, that you would give them clear minds and hearts as they face so many different difficult issues and decisions. Today, we especially pray for the Walsh family. We don't understand for a second how so much tragedy could come to one family. Our heart breaks when we consider what this family is going through and most of us don't understand it at all. We feel hopeless to help in any significant way, so we do what we know to do. We pray. We look to you. So we pray for your hand to be upon Tyler, to be upon his family, to be upon Mr. Corey and Emma and Carter, Ms. Claudia. We pray, Lord God, that you would give wisdom to the doctors and the staff. God, we pray for healing. We pray for a peace that'll settle so firmly in the hearts of everyone involved. We think of this family. We think of these students. We think of this community. And God, we don't know what to do, so we look to you. God, at times, at times, we feel like our world is spinning out of control. And as people, we feel confused and at times, we feel so very empty. So we pray, God, that you would help us. Help us to turn to you. Help us allow you to fill our lives. We humbly bring these requests to you. In the holy and precious name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pastor Pugner, thank you for being here. Pastor Pugner's from the Coastal Community Church, and we thank you for that prayer today. Okay, now, Board, I would ask you for a motion to approve the open session board minutes from August 20th, '24.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Buchanan, a second by Mr. Smack. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. And now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Taylor for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrante. Before I begin my prepared report today, I want to address this morning's school safety messages. I first want to thank our sheriff's office, the Worcester County Sheriff's Office, for their continued partnership in ensuring the safety and security of all our students and our staff. While we now know that the referenced social media post was a non-credible threat, I mean, reiterate, a non-credible threat, we understand the anxiety and stress that our families felt this morning. It is unfortunate that these types of social media posts are disrupting learning across our nation, not just here in Worcester. But as with any concern regarding school safety, we must take reports of this nature seriously so they can be investigated by our law enforcement partners. Again, I want to personally and professionally thank our families for their understanding and patience throughout today's safety updates. And now I'll get to my actual report. Last month, I was excited to tell you about the ways we would be welcoming students and staff back to school. And I'd like to give our public a brief overview of the incredible success we've had the first few weeks of school. Before our first day of school, we released to both our staff and then to our community. Before our first day of school, we released to both our staff and then to our community our annual back-to-school video, which has reached nearly 1,100 views on YouTube. If you haven't already, I encourage you to give it a watch, either on your YouTube channel or on our website. It's sure to bring a smile to your face as I joined leaders across our school system to welcome our staff and students and unveiled our theme for this school year, connection, care, and community. As I shared in my Mr. Rogers Cardigan and tennis shoes, this year, we are striving to build and strengthening our school system community through connection and care. We all know that the best way to reach our students and have them invest in their learning is to build relationships with them, and that is critically important to me. But we believe that building these connections with one another really transcends in our classrooms across our 14 schools. I hope all of you will join us in using every interaction with another person as an opportunity to connect and extend kindness and care. And now I want to thank our board members. I truly want to thank them. I don't know that any other school system does this, but all seven of our Board of Ed members sitting before you today joined me and my team for a portion or the entire first day of school for a tour of our 14 schools. It's a busy day as we crisscross the county and visit every single school in that day here in Worcester County. But it is incredibly worthwhile to see the excitement from our families, our teachers and staff, and of course, from our students. I want to extend my special thanks today to the president of the Maryland State Board of Education, Dr. Joshua Michael, who joined us at our first two stops of the day before having to make his way back to Baltimore. To keep the good news rolling, I am also extremely proud to share with the board that we received news this week that Gabrielle Remington, or Gabby as I know her, because she was a student of mine at Stephen Decatur and now a teacher, was named one of the seven finalists for the Maryland Teacher of the Year Program. I'll be sharing invitation information with our board members should any of them like to travel with us to Baltimore in October, where they will honor her alongside the other 23 county level teachers of the year. And we'll all keep our fingers crossed that maybe next month, I can announce that she brought the state title back here to Worcester County. And lastly, we announced just a couple of weeks ago, Worcester County's performance on the Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program, or MCAP as we know it, was a standout again this year. I don't want to steal too much of Dr. Hamel's thunder as he is presenting on exactly this topic later in our meeting, but I do want to express today my thanks, first and foremost, to our students and to our outstanding, and I emphasize outstanding, teachers and staff for helping to make our schools the envy of the state and in many cases, cases, the nation, as our data shows us leading the pack once again. With that, I'll end on that positive note, and I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Ferrante.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. And now I'd like to welcome our 2024-2025 student representatives with respective reports from their schools. And I believe this, this month, we're starting with Teresa. Teresa, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrante. Good afternoon, Board of Education members and executive team. We have had a powerful start to this school year with positive relationship building, high student engagement, tribe inductions, and academic celebrations. It is our goal that 100% of students are plugged into something positive at Pokemoke High School. We began the first week with class meetings for goal setting as well as Club Rush. There are almost 20 clubs and organizations for students to choose from for positive involvement. After-School Academy and Driver's Education were also accepting registrations at Club Rush. Last week, we began a new tradition that celebrates academic excellence. At the beginning of tribe inductions in our large gym, we had a celebration of students who passed advanced placement tests last spring. Students walked down the red carpet, receiving applause for their, from their peers. Forty-six advanced placement assessments were passed. We then held our annual tribe induction, where over 150 new warriors became part of our tribes. Tribes compete throughout the year for positive points and points for attendance. We have had a strong start to athletics this year. A highlight was a big win for field hockey over Queen Anne's in an overtime shootout. We are excited to see what this season will hold. After-School Academy begins on September 24th. We are grateful for continued partnerships with UMS4H, Worcester Connects, and Drive On Time, as well as the MVA. We are looking forward to offering an after-after-school session from 5:00 to 7:00 as well. Students are attending a UMD field trip on Thursday with our counselors and career coach, and J.R.T.C. will be attending a Navy game on Saturday. Teachers will also participate in a fundraiser on Thursday, wearing orange along with students in support of Tyler Walsh and his family. Finally, class council, student ambassador, and homecoming voting will occur this week. We are excited to host our homecoming games on Friday night, October 11th, and our dance on October 12th. Pokemoke Community Schools students and staff are grateful for the continued support of our Board of Education and executive team. For our Worcester Technical High School's Board of Education report, the 2024 to 2025 school year is off to a great start. Eight hundred students are enrolled at Worcester Technical High School. Teachers hit the ground running and challenge students with critical thinking in their shops and labs. PBIS restorative circles have begun using the Worcester Tech Works model, which emphasizes a workplace code of conduct, seeing punctuality, proper attire, worth ethics, and employability. Phil Cropper is the Worcester Technical High School's September Staff of the Month. Speaking of Phil Cropper, The Pines Cafe opened its doors on Monday, September 9th. This one-of-a-kind teaching cafe currently has one Worcester County student, one former Worcester County Culinary Arts Program graduate, and a retired expert from the hotel management industry running the cafe. With the Maryland Blueprints emphasis on connecting high school students with apprenticeships, The Pines Cafe offers a model for local businesses. We would like to thank the Worcester County Board of Education, Mr. Taylor, and the executive team, Worcester County Schools staff and students, and Worcester County residents for their support of this endeavor. Worcester Tech's 15th Annual Golf Tournament is Saturday, October 5th, at Ocean Resorts Golf Club. All funds will go to Skills USA to pay for Skills USA memberships, travel expensive expenses, and student uniforms and required gear. Any interested individuals are encouraged to contact the Technical High School for details on entering a golf team, sponsoring a hole, or any donations or contributions. And now on to Chloe.
Thank you. Good afternoon. We're off to an exciting start this fall at Snow Hill High School, and our first Friday Night Football game set the tone by doubling as a Hall of Fame celebration. This year, we proudly inducted Mr. Danny Hudson, who began driving for Snow Hill area schools in 1978 and faithfully transported our athletic teams from 2004 to 2020. When bus 72 rolled up, athletes knew they were in for a quick and safe ride, backed by the support of one of their biggest fans. We also paid tribute to Mr. Edwin Buddy Shockley, a founding father of Snow Hill High School football in 1972 and a cornerstone of our community. Mr. Shockley served as a chain crew member for Snow Hill Football for an incredible 45 years, from 1972 to 2017. He is a lifetime member of the Snow Hill Volunteer Fire Department, served as president of Maryland National Bank for 44 years, and led the Snow Hill Fire Department as president on 14 occasions. The Snow, the 1989 Snow Hill Basketball, Boys Basketball Team remains one of the greatest high school teams in Maryland history. Known for their electrifying offense, they averaged 94 points per game with multiple players consistently hitting double figures. This championship team not only brought the community together, but also elevated Eastern Shore Athletics and produced outstanding men who still exemplify Eagle pride. Their historic 26-0 undefeated season, in which they held opponents to an average of just 66 points per game, remains a high mark in Maryland sports. The late Coach Alan Miller received the Coach of the, Coach of the Year Award, while the late Sharon Mills was honored as the Player of the Year. Many of their records remain unmatched in the Maryland Public Secondary Schools Athletic Association. The Counseling Department at Snow Hill High School has an exciting and busy September and October coming up. Students will have several opportunities to participate in college and career readiness events. There will be several representatives from colleges and universities coming to Snow Hill High School to provide information sessions in regard to the application process, program, and extracurricular activities to students. Some of these colleges and universities include, but are not limited to, University of Maryland College Park, McDaniel College, High Point University, Christopher Newport, and St. Mary's. There will be a trip to UMS for students to attend a college fair, which will include 50 different colleges and university representatives to speak with. Finally, senior counselor Ms. Hilbert and Snow Hill High School's career coach, Mrs. Cloud, will be assisting senior students with getting onboarded to school links to begin and continue their post-high school planning. Mrs. Johnson will be facilitating her freshman focus groups and meetings to support the incoming freshmen adjusting to the high school world. The Counseling Department sends a thank you to all staff and administration who have been supporting and assisting in making these events happen for our students. We are excited to share our After-School Academy will continue with our English and Math academic supports. Session one will also include morning weightlifting, bilingual paradise, academic tutoring, science support, songbirds, and adventurers' club Dungeons and Dragons. We are offering our Driver's Education Program along with four $200 student scholarships towards their overall fee. We look forward to starting two new clubs this session, our Co-Et Lacrosse Program, one day a week, and a Food for the Soul Cooking Course. Now I'm handing it over to Brooke.
Thank you, Chloe. As you may know, our school has been shaken by a terrible pedestrian accident that occurred this past weekend. Before I begin, and on behalf of the Walsh family, I'd like to take a moment to thank and recognize our Seahawk community members for the tremendous outpouring of support they have expressed in the wake of Tyler's devastating accident. Also, we'd like to recognize our athletic boosters for rallying together for a special fundraising night, and our guidance staff for mobilizing to assist students and teachers as they grapple with their thoughts and emotions in the aftermath. I'm asking everyone in this room to keep Tyler, his family, friends, classmates, and our student body in your thoughts and prayers. Now, on to the school business. Days may be getting shorter, but the list of activities and events is getting longer at Stephen Decatur High School. The accolades for our school and our students are no exception. First, we are proud to say that we have been voted Coastal Style Magazine's Best School for a fourth year in a row. Secondly, we had 329 passing scores on advanced placement exams, including 67 students who earned advanced placement honors for College Board, 27 more than just two years ago. Additionally, we had 22 students earn national recognition as rural, first generation, African American, and/or Hispanic for their performance on the spring administration of the PSAT. To launch the fall sports season, we sponsored a very successful student athlete and mental health seminar, where we were joined by renowned doctor of sport and performance psychology, Dr. Joanne Bullard. Topics addressed included athlete burnout, mental exhaustion, and performance anxiety. We were pleased to address mind-body connection to our student athletes and visiting students from across the area. Meanwhile, we are kicking off the year by holding student elections for class office and the Student Government Association, and we are making plans for hosting an activity fair during lunch shifts with the goal of getting every student participating in an extracurricular program. Also, our 15 sports teams have been cruising through their seasons in spectacular fashion. Our clubs and extracurricular programs are also off and running with the NJROTC program, presenting the colors during our Friday Night Lights events. Our key club and fellowship of Christian athletes begin their list of activities. Our National English Honor Society will host its induction ceremony on September 24th, and our National Honor Society members have been busy serving as hosts and greeters for various school functions, including our annual SEHS Freshman Seahawk Day, Back-to-School Night, and volunteering to assist Buckingham Elementary with its Back-to-School Night. Looking ahead to the coming weeks, we are excited for Homecoming Week, which begins on October 7th, and preparations are already being made for this exciting week. Other events that are on the horizon for us include the ROKA Honor Society induction ceremony and the Presidential Service Awards Ceremony on October 17th. Meanwhile, our PBIS team is busy establishing fun, positive school climate activities. Our instructional days have been meaningful and exciting, and both our students and teachers have fully embraced the Seahawk spirit. Again, from all of us at Stephen Decatur High School, thank you for thoughts and prayers for the Walsh family and for making our school system so great. Best wishes to everyone for a safe, productive, and happy school year. Now back to you, Mr. Ferrante.
Brooke, thank you. Chloe, Teresa, thank you for being here with us today, and thank you for taking the time out of your busy school day to give us those informative updates in school. We do appreciate it. Now it's time for audience recognition, and I want to ask if we have anyone from the WCTA here with us today? Good afternoon, Beth. How about the WCESPA?
Helen's here.
And Helen, from the Worcester County Retired School Personnel?
Hi.
Thank you very, very much. Representatives from various schools, PSYICs, PTAs, anyone with us today? Okay, thank you. And now we have a resolution, and I'm going to have it turned over to Dr. Andes for our Community School Liaison Appreciation Week.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrante. If Lauren Williams could please come forward to accept us. Bring all your special guests. Whoever your special guests are, bring them, bring the whole team. These are very, very special people. So I have a proclamation to read, Community School Liaisons Appreciation Week, September 16th to the 20th, 2024. Whereas community schools provide integrated student supports, expanded learning opportunities, active family and community engagement, use collaborative leadership and strategic practices to improve outcomes for students, family, and the community. Whereas community school liaisons are the key to successful community schools, creating, strengthening, and maintaining the bridge between the school and the community. Whereas community school liaisons facilitate and provide leadership for the collaborative process and development of a continuum of services for children, families, and community members within a school neighborhood. Whereas Worcester County Public Schools has six outstanding, phenomenal, I added that, phenomenal, outstanding, community school liaisons who work diligently to create and manage the partnerships that will allow our students to learn and communities to thrive. Whereas community school liaisons, through their role, deliver a strong monetary return on investment for community schools and their communities, with studies citing a return of $7 for every dollar invested in the salary of a community school liaison. And whereas Worcester County Public Schools is joining a National Community School Coordinators Appreciation Week with the Institute for Educational Leadership Coalition for community schools to celebrate and lift up their work across the country. Now therefore be it resolved that the Worcester County Board of Education proclaims the week of September 16th to the 20th, 2024, as Community School Liaison Appreciation Week, to honor the community school liaison's diligent work to serve our students, families, and communities. Signed by Todd A. Ferrante, President of the Worcester County Board of Education, and Louis H. Taylor, Superintendent of Schools. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's the part, thank you.
So, around here, so we get a picture. We're hard.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Andes, especially for the ad lib. Now, I'd like to, it's time for Worcester County Schools Hall of Fame Induction. And Mr. Taylor and I will be right down.
This is really an honor for me today. And Carrie Steers, who's our Public Relations Officer, puts a script together. And there's times Carrie says to me, "Mr. Taylor, follow the script. Don't go off-script." Then she says to me at times, "You can go off a little bit." And today she said a little bit, but it's going to be very hard for me to go off a little bit. Because the ones that we are honoring and inducting today, I've had a personal relationship and a professional relationship. Either they brought me up through the school system, or I've worked with these professionals and seen the quality work they do. So I'll start with the script. Well, it's my great pleasure today to officially introduce to everyone here and at whom who's watching us, our first class of inductees into the Worcester County Public Schools Hall of Fame. The Hall of Fame Recognition Program is a partnership program between the school system and the Worcester County Retired Schools Personnel Association, of which Dr. Andes and Ms. Scholstoff are a great part. And I'm going to ask Ms. Scholstoff and Dr. Andes to join us. But as they're joining us, I'll stop off-script for a minute. And I have to tell you that Dr. Andes came to me a little over a year ago and really had a vision for this program. And I want to thank him for this because as we've gotten into it, it is amazing, and it's going to be even more amazing moving forward. This recognition program was kicked off in twenty twenty-two and accepted nominations on a rolling basis with the first review of nominations occurring this past spring. Now let's just go over the logistics real quick. As I recognize each of these and six inductees, I'll ask them if they are present to join me up here. While I will share a little about them and their contributions to our school system, and then we will take a photograph and invite their family and close friends in attendance to join for a second photograph as well. For those inductees who are being honored, we'll invite the family up for the photo following my, following sharing a bit about each of them. Once we have recognized everyone, we will take a brief recess where our honorees and their families can join us in the hallway, right outside the room here, to unveil the Hall of Fame Interactive Installation. And now I'm proud to recognize the following individuals as part of the Hall of Fame Class of twenty twenty-four in alphabetical order. This first one is the most difficult for me. Because this lady meant the world to me as a student and as a principal. And I have given people like Dr. Andes recognition for teaching me a lot of things. But this lady taught me a whole lot of things. And she, if she were here right now, here, I am ad-libbing, I'm not staying on script, Carrie, sorry. If she were here right now, I just can't imagine being able to introduce her, but I know she's watching down on us. First, we recognize Ms. Gladys C. Burbage, who dedicated thirty-one years of service to the Worcester County Public Schools. Ms. Burbage served as Principal of Stephen Decatur High School for nineteen years. And up until the time that she could no longer effectively communicate, she communicated with me on a regular basis. She lived in Wisconsin for a while. And every month after I became the principal there, she would send me a note with clippings that I think Kirk had sent her the papers. And the notes are just so incredibly positive. And in her last time she visited Stephen Decatur, Kirk brought her out in a wheelchair. And Ms. Burbage went around that entire school. And I leaned down to her, I said, "Ms. Burbage," I was getting up in years of being there, I said, "You've been here, you were here nineteen years." And I said, "I'm slowly going in that direction." I said, "I hope I don't surpass you because you deserve to be." And she looked at me, she said, "Lou, I hope you go many years past me." That's the kind of lady she was. As I said, Ms. Burbage is the longest-serving Principal of Stephen Decatur High School in nineteen years. And I think this comment from one of her nominees perfectly sums up why she is so deserving of this recognition. And I quote, "She was quiet, confident, capable, and incredibly intuitive about how to manage a school, and most importantly, the people who occupied it. Her skills spanned across multiple ages, disciplines, and activities, all in one formidable package." I could go on and on, but for time, I think you get what Ms. Burbage was about. While Ms. Burbage is no longer with us, I would like to invite her family here with us today to accept this plaque. I know Kirk and Patrice, her son and daughter, are here. And Patrice and I went through those halls right around the same time at Stephen Decatur High School. She was a couple of years older, not much, but a couple. So at this time, Patrice and Kirk, would you come forward to accept this plaque on behalf of your mom? Now, before you go, I know there are many other people, handful of people who are teachers and are here to support Ms. Burbage. I said, "Go in," I said, "Elaine, I'd like any teacher that is here or person who worked with Ms. Burbage to come up at this time so can we get a group shot, please?" Ray, yep, I see Ray. Fred, you were with her? It spanned over a lot of people. You were there too. Next, I'm happy to invite a former colleague of mine who, when you put the word "teacher" and then you put the definition beside it, you put this guy's name. Rick Chapman, please come up. If any of you in this room never saw the Ocean City Stars under Rick Chapman, you missed it. Mr. Chapman is well-known here in Worcester County, not only for his thirty-six years of incredible teaching, but for bringing to life one of the most requested performing arts groups in our school system, Ocean City Elementary's O C Stars. The Coral Assembly has become a staple in our community events, whether it's at Sun Fest, Spring Fest, and many others. O C Stars have made our students just that, absolute stars of our community. And we have Mr. Chapman to thank, who started this, and we can still see his imprint on it today. As one of his nominees, nominators shared, Rick has always been very humble about his talents, and I can attest to that. But he will always be remembered as one of the greatest, greatest instructors and teachers here in Worcester County Public Schools. And I wholeheartedly agree with that as well. Again, Rick Chapman, congratulations. Next, I'm proud to recognize Mrs. Roxy Conley. Mrs. Conley served students in the Berlin community for thirty-four years at both the Flower Street and Buckingham Elementary Schools. A special education teacher, she was truly dedicated to the young people in her community, both in and out of the classroom. And they knew her in the community. A volunteer at the local food bank and a community liaison, she worked tirelessly to ensure the care of Berlin's young people. Energetic and focused. A nominator said of her, "Mrs. Conley wanted to inspire and motivate her students to help them throughout their lives and beyond the classroom." I also want to mention that Mrs. Conley served as the President of the Worcester County Retired School Personnel Association for many years. Mrs. Conley unfortunately passed away in twenty fifteen. And I don't believe her family was able to attend today as they now reside in Florida. But I'd like us all to celebrate with a round of applause for Mrs. Roxy Conley. Okay. Coral Lee, I know you're watching. I think you live in California now, Coral Lee Fraschetti. She's not here, so hopefully Coral Lee, you see us. And she is again on our livestream, and thank you to Carrie, who set that up for Coral Lee today. Mrs. Coral Lee Fraschetti dedicated thirty-six years to our school system. And while all of her nominators detailed her kindness and gentle demeanor and her dedication to her students, some of the most powerful testimonials came from her former colleagues. They spoke of her mentorship and willingness to be collaborative, which is, as we all know, is the hallmark of a great veteran teacher. In one nominator's words, "Ms. Fraschetti is an extremely exemplary example of what a teacher should be. We are better for having her to be a member of our staff." So again, it's my honor to say hi Coral Lee on the camera, and congratulations, and if we could show our appreciation, who Coral Lee is watching from California. Coral Lee, I hope you can see this through the livestream, but we will make sure you get this, my dear. This next one is a little personal with me as well, and really the next two. Because I had the privilege of working with this gentleman. And to speak of a consummate professional is Mr. Fred Grant. And I'd like to ask Mr. Fred Grant to join us at this time. I'm going to try not to ad-lib a whole lot, but because of my relationship professionally with Mr. Grant, there's a few things that I want to say that I totally appreciated when I worked with him. Many of us here know how Mr. Grant has served our school system in so many ways. But his resounding achievement throughout the nominations was received was how, under his leadership as Principal of Pokemoke High School, the school was named a Maryland Blue Ribbon School of Excellence for the first time. After that hallmark achievement, he decided to broaden the impact he could make and spent the next thirteen years ensuring our students were connected to the resources they needed to be successful in this county as supervisor of student services. When I became the Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Grant was the supervisor down here, and he, I don't want to say he answered to me, because he did, because I answered to him, I need to know more than I needed to know, and went to Fred. But Fred spent a few times in there coaching me along, and he didn't even know he was coaching me along. And filling me in on the way things should run, and I learned a lot from Fred Grant. And I'm glad today I have the opportunity to tell him that, and thank you for doing that. One nominator called him the ultimate professional, caring and concerned for both staff and students. And as I said, I am truly honored to recognize Mr. Fred Grant today into the Hall of Fame here in Worcester County. Fred, congratulations. Family and friends that are here to support Mr. Grant, or if you've worked with Fred Grant, please come on up. Because I know there is a number of you that have worked with Mr. Grant. You can see in numbers the impact that Mr. Grant had. It's funny how this thing turned out today, because the first lady I introduced Some of you know, the other gentleman that was with me was Bernard Bowen. And Bernard Bowen and I got in the back seat, and we remember her, so we didn't clown around when we got in the backseat. And she let us know from Stephen Decatur to Berlin Middle School that if we messed up or caused a problem out there on that floor today, that she was going to deliver us to our fathers, and that she would give the remarks of what we did. And she says, and if you think I'm, I remember it today, if you think I'm playing, try me. So Ms. Spry, I knew you were looking down on us, I knew you were serious. So our last member of the class of 2024 inductees is Ms. Elaine Spry. A common thread of what we learned from both her nominators, former students, and colleagues alike, is that while Ms. Spry was tough, she cared deeply for her students. Rising to become the principal of an all African-American Flower Street Elementary School, she was adamant that her students be prepared for what lay ahead for them. This was never more important than when Worcester County Public Schools desegregated in 1970. A key leader of that process, Ms. Spry moved from Flower Street Elementary to Buckingham Elementary, where she served at, and I think that was Berlin Middle School. Yeah, that's okay, sorry. Trust me, I knew she was at Berlin Middle School. I was there when that school opened in the fifth grade, and I met Ms. Spry on the first day. So I knew how to correct that one. But she was there until her retirement in 1979. In fact, I know where Ms., where I go by Ms. Spry's house now, I look over there just to make sure she's not looking out the window. But she was there until 1979. As one nominator said of her, Ms. Spry put her heart and soul into the school, and staff and teachers alike benefited from having her in their lives. Unfortunately, Ms. Spry passed away in 2014, and I believe today Ms. Velda Henry, her goddaughter, is here on her behalf. Velda, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask someone that I know was extremely close to come up with you, and that's Mr. Tom Dorman, to be, take this award, so that we can present I'm gonna wait until Mr. Dorman sits down, so I don't mess up, and he come up here and the award to the two of you in honor of Ms. Spry. yank this mic out of my hand, because he was my principal in the fifth grade. Now, before we recess to unveil the interactive installation in the hallway, I want to thank a few people who were instrumental in this creation, which I believe will impress everyone that visits our main office here. First, I want to thank Carrie Steers and Jordi Cuzac. The Office of Public Relations has put a lot of hours into researching, designing, and spearheading both this recognition program and the accompanying installation. I also want to thank Caleb Wilson and Chris Shenton for their support in creating the interactivity of the installation. And finally, I want to extend a special thanks to Mr. Todd Johnson, who works in our maintenance department, whose craftsmanship on the installation is in a word superb. Thanks to all. And last but not least, again, I want to thank John Andes and Helen Scholzoff, who led this, who led this and got this started, and we're gonna have many more years of this because of their foresight and because of their vision for this Hall of Fame. So again, can we give everyone a round of applause? And now, we're gonna take a brief, when I say brief, we're gonna take a very brief recess, we're gonna go out, we're gonna unveil the interactive wall and show you all that, and then we'll come right back in and continue with our meeting. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for that brief recess and getting back into our meeting. Before I move to 5.4, I wanted to, every year, we have a memorandum of understanding with the school resource deputies in the sheriff's department. And our sheriff is here and I can't say enough about the relationship that we have with our sheriff's department and the fact that they do such a great job in keeping our children safe every day that they go to school. It's so much appreciated and we have such a great collaboration working together. So I'd like to ask the sheriff to come up and we're going to sign this memorandum of understanding, which will then go to our president of county commissioners and they will sign as well.
Before we finalize this memorandum of understanding, the president of the school board will sign it. Myself as superintendent, sheriff Matt Chrisifoli, and then president of the county commissioners, Mr. Patino will sign this memorandum of understanding. I want to say to our audience and to our public that we are off to a great start. Matt and I have had, along with Dr. Wallace, our chief safety officer, a tremendous amount of discussions over the summer. Matt joined us the first day with part of his staff, a few of them are in the back today as we traveled to the 14 schools. And I feel very strongly with this memorandum of understanding and with the relationship that has been working so strongly recently that we will have a great school year in Worcester County. I'm not saying we're not going to have bumps in the road because there are. Any organization that's the size of a school system, it's not always perfect. But the other thing I want to share with you that is of as safety, and I've shared this with Matt, and if Matt wants to say anything, I certainly want to allow him, is that the Maryland Center for School Safety works with Matt's organization and my organization, and they have been very supportive of what we do here in Worcester County with school safety. As a matter of fact, we've been asked to share some of our information with the state as a model for school safety here in Maryland, and we've more to come on that. But again, I'm just grateful that I'm the person responsible for everything here. Matt's the person responsible and we have great staff, both his staff and my staff, who work collaboratively together, and it's been a pleasure working moving forward as we've kicked off this school year.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, and thank you, Mr. Ferrante. We are off to a wonderful start. Our goal is to move forward, not look back, but look forward. And we have started off the year with a lot of wonderful collaboration, and we stress this every day with our SRDs and we stress this every day with our staffing. Communication is always going to be key, so we're off to a great start. You're seeing a lot of national attention on threats within our schools. I can tell you that we are going to continue to work tirelessly to run down each and every threat. There was one today that has circulated that we have proven to be non-credible. But they're coming up more and more, so my team, along with Worcester County Public Schools, will work collaboratively to take each and every one of these threats seriously. And I believe that with the communication that we have established, that can also help to mitigate potential incidents of violence. So again, thank you for your support and collaboration. You're right, nothing is perfect. We are human beings, but we're going to work hard each and every day to make today better than yesterday. I'd like to thank our board. I'd like to thank my team that's here, Lieutenant Troutman, Sergeant Valerio, and Corporal Weiss, and Sean Goddard. Thank you for the collaboration with your team and our team. So thank you, everyone, for being here. Let's have a great school year.
Okay, now I'm at individuals and delegation comments. Do we have anyone wishing to speak today who isn't signed up? Have no speakers? Okay, moving on to curriculum instruction report, the new digital audio visual presentation. I'll turn it over to Ms. Shorts. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Dr. Wallace.
Yep. Good afternoon. I want to welcome Ms. Tamara Mills. Oh, there she, I was like, where's Tamara? There she is, right in front, to the podium. I want to thank Tamara for her leadership. I am super excited to, oh, okay. I have, I have a musical background going along, okay? Thank you for that. I'm not a good singer, so just in the choir, but I want to thank Tamara for her leadership of this program, along with Dr. Brian Phillips, Mr. Tony Belavacqua, who was here earlier. But I also just want to point out, one exciting point to this, and Tamara may be mentioning it in here, is that we have a student, a Worcester County graduate, who is currently, has been nominated for a country music television award for Jelly Roll's album. And so the program that Tamara is presenting, if he had had an opportunity at this program, I'm sure that this would have been something he would have been very plugged in. We have a Pokemoke High School graduate right now who is in line for a very big national award for a program just like this. So I want to thank Tamara. One of our goals in Worcester County Public Schools is that every student is plugged into something that is meaningful to them besides academics. And so really Tamara's vision was, was really pivotal in creating this program. So I want to thank her for all the talents that she, that she brings to the table, but specifically, we're super excited about this program. So Tamara, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. All right, so that walk-up music, which she didn't actually walk up, sorry, was eight days' worth of learning instruction from Keandre Nixon, one of our Snow Hill High School students, who is killing it in this program. We have 15 students, which is exciting, for this digital audio and video production program. So I'm just going to talk to you a little bit about it, and then if we have time, I'll do another sampling of music. Oh, there it goes. Nice. All right, so I'll just kind of play that in the background. When we looked at this innovation grant, which was provided to us from the State Department, we looked at the extent of need and how could we meet the arts needs and the community's needs and the industry's needs through a program that includes digital audio, digital video. One of the things that we've noticed in a lot of our music programs is that we have seen a decrease since COVID. And that's one of the things that we noticed, but we've also noted that as a culture, there are other forms, there's technological advances and other forms of music that our students are interested in. So in addition to the wonderful band and choral and orchestra programs, which we want to continue and teachers continue to recruit for, we wanted to kind of dip our toes in the water and say, what else is out there? One of the other reasons that we had a need for this type of program is that the state's goal of 45% of students graduating or leaving high school with an IRC or an industry-recognized credential or an apprenticeship, we're trying to reach that 45%. So what other avenues can we do that in? There's some data to support that this program is important and is needed. One of those pieces of data is that the Maryland Department of Labor projects a 9.9% increase in the, of growth in the occupations of entertainment, sports, media, arts, design, and, and that's from 2020 to 2020, to 2030, sorry. So in this decade, we're looking at almost 10% growth in the industry. We also see a huge under-representation of several populations, one being females in the music industry and audiovisual industry, and also of BIPOC individuals or Black and Indigenous people of color. So we are looking at how do we get those individuals as plugged in as our other students may be. And we went ahead and did a survey as well of a lot of our middle school students and high school students, and 79% of students who took the survey said, yeah, this is actually a program they'd be really interested in trying out and checking out and seeing what it's all about. We looked at careers that are possible, and some of them may be a little bit more difficult in this area to find, but as we know, you know, technology's advancing and this industry, or this area is growing. But you can see the list of different types of careers that can be sought out from learning in this program. We have partners for this, which is a really important component of any CTE program. Our post-secondary partner is Salisbury University, and we've met with Dr. Colleen Clark, the music department chair, and Suzanne O'Mallo, who is their music production and sound technician. We've also spoken to Lynn Patterson, who's a Towson University rep on our PAC or our group. And we have some industry partners as well, and that is Mike LaCates from MidSouth Audio has been a big partner. We've spoken to Dave Messick and Maurice Waters, who are both video and multimedia artists in our community. We also have on our team Dr. Paul Tuker from Freeman Arts Pavilion, who does a lot with our county, and we intend to make an invite to Mr. Tom Taylor from our public access channel at Salisbury University. The other great piece to this is that students can, as of right now, when they take the course, or when they complete the course, rather, they can receive four credits in Intro to Music Technology at Salisbury University, and we are hoping to add on to that a beginning audio production class credit as well. So we're excited about that. For our youth apprentice opportunities, again, we've spoken to MidSouth Audio as possible apprenticeship partner, as well as Freeman Stage. We have recently had students attend Freeman Stage backstage days, where they actually get to see what, what it's like to work backstage at, at one of the Freeman concerts in the summertime. And so we've had sent several students, particularly from Decatur, being close in proximity, and they have had an amazing time, looking at how the sound engineers work, how do, how does the lighting work, the mics, the setup, and so we hope to expand upon that. For certifications, they will leave with an Adobe Premiere Pro certification, which is the state-recognized IRC right now, but we hope to add to that particularly Avid Pro Tools. We may be adding Logic Pro X and Avid Media Composer, but Avid Pro Tools is ultimately what most individuals in the music and video, or audio and video production industry, if you go to WBOC and work in their production, their studios, you're going to use Avid Pro Tools. If you go work for MidSouth Audio, you're going to work with Avid Pro Tools. So we're working on getting that as being a state-recognized IRC. So ultimately, our goals are not only to create a new pathway, but also to increase IRCs and youth apprenticeships by June 30th, to cultivate students and give them additional 21st century skills, and to decrease the enrollment disparity of students of color in the IMP program. So overall, this falls under Interactive Media Production, their umbrella, and right now, we would like to increase the enrollment of our females and of our students of color and also our minorities. So we hope to see those, those increases this year, next year, and the year following. In your presentation, I won't go through every step with you for time's sake, but I sort of outlined the steps in this process. It's, it's been quick and it's been a heavy lift, but ultimately, we're almost to the end of it, which is great. We didn't get the grant application until around January. It was due in March. We didn't find out until the last week or so of April, and then they said, okay, now enroll students in it and get it ready to go by September. So it was a lot, but it was worth it to see these students sitting in our classes, working on it. So right now, we're still just finishing up installing the last bit of software, adding in and retrofitting the studio over at the technical high school. Mr. Bevelacqua, he was here, sorry, he's been a huge help in making all of this happen in such a quick timeline. And again, I just, I'm excited to highlight the students' work. Anyone who wants to hear any other samplings, we have about five or six different tracks right now, and in fact, a couple of the students sent them over to Mr. Bevelacqua, too, and to play on announcements or, you know, entrance music, things like that. So we're really proud of what they're creating in just, this was in less than eight days. Yes, that would be amazing. That would be amazing. I will, if you guys don't mind, I'd like to play just maybe 20, 30 seconds of one more. And again, this is just in less than eight days, what these students, she's actually going to use hers as, the student's going to use hers as a media expo project as well, which is great crossover. And what sounds really simple is really a layering, if you take a look at the screen that they're working on, a layering of instruments and beats and time signatures, and it's, there's a lot to it. So it's really incredible and I'm excited about it. Okay, do you guys have any questions? I'm sorry, Brian, Dr. Phillips couldn't be here today. He is out of town, I believe, at a conference, so he sends his regards as well.
Mr. Buchanan.
Dr. Wallace, I see a Grammy Award nomination. I think you, I think you said an important award.
We're trying to get students at concerts when they come through. If you have any connections, you can give it to me.
Well, you know, Andrew Bayless was a Pokemoke High School graduate and, and family from Pokemoke. Tamara. 15 students in a matter of a couple of months.
Well.
That's really impressive. It really is, you know, to, to put a program, because, you know, a lot of times, you know, teenagers, especially, they don't want to really deviate too much from what is familiar and comfortable for them, you know. So to get, to get 15 students into a brand-new program is to be commended.
It wasn't easy, and I do want to commend our school counselors, because it was really also them going around and talking to students. The new teacher for this program did a recorded morning announcement where he could share kind of what this was about. And I, and I will say, I don't, I'm remiss if I say that there are certainly concerns where we don't want to, we want students in there who love music, right, but not everyone loves music in the same ways. You know, this program ultimately is not to take away from our band at the home schools, right, or to take, kind of poach, quote unquote, their students, right? But what we're looking for, and they can certainly participate, because we do offer this program in the morning and the afternoon. That way, they can still have band or chorus at their home school if that fits in their schedule. But also, what we're looking for is that student who loves music, but as Dr. Wallace was saying, isn't plugged in yet, you know, loves music in maybe a less conventional way, or loves the new technology piece of music. So thank you. We, we actually were worried we were going to start the school year with six, and we were very excited to hear that. There were several additions, even just at the last minute. So we were at 17, two had to drop because of their schedule, and we're really happy with 15.
Tamara never.
I would imagine, too, that next year is going to increase, you know, because once the kids take it back to their friends, oh, this is what I'm doing at the tech center, and I'm going to, wow, I'm interested.
We hope so.
Yeah.
Tamara doesn't give herself enough credit. Tamara was a huge lift in this. For those of you who are familiar with schools, we schedule in January. So when we talk about a program that we got the application in January and we start, we write it and we find out, we were way behind the eight ball in this, and Tamara really took a lot of leadership. So she doesn't give herself enough credit, because we were scheduled out and schedules were finished and master schedules were struck, and then this got added. So big lift, big thank you.
Well, thank you, but I do credit the, the school counselors for that, too.
Any other board members have any questions?
Just had a quick question. How long is this grant for?
So the grant was simply a startup grant. So it was $500,000 to retrofit the classroom and a television studio for, so it's good. I mean, it's done. We have the program. We were able to, within the staff positions we had, move folks around to be able to supply the teacher, but after this, there's, there is no more grant money for this particular project, but it's going, it's good to go for quite a few years.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, Dee.
I, I would just like to say, too, because he walked in the room, Brian Cook is our wonderful grant writer, and I know often he gets nods, but just a round of applause, because he, he does chase after a lot of grants, and again, this was a last-minute thing that he put things aside for, and thank you, Brian.
I echo that. Dr. Cook was tremendously helpful. A lot of people would run when they said, oh, yeah, we have this grant and it's due in 27 days. He would have, some people would turn and run the other way, and he really helped Dr. Phillips and I make sure we got this in.
Any other questions? Tamara, I just want to say that there's a lot of students out there that are going to be very happy of this opportunity, because it's going to open up a window for them to explore some of their dreams. So it's, it's a great thing that you've done. We really appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the board's support for this as well. Thanks.
Dr. Wallace, I'm going to stay with you for the Family and School Together events.
Yeah. Our next presentation, I'm going to let Mr. Green introduce his staff who's here today, but I can share with you as they come up and get their presentation up, that getting parents involved at the high school level in something, truthfully, besides athletics can be a real challenge, and Snow Hill High School has put this event together several years ago, and I'll, I give them a lot of kudos for continuing to make adjustments over the years, figure out what's working, what's not working, and tweak things. So, Mr. Green, I'll let you introduce your staff.
Good afternoon, everyone. So we've got Mrs. McGinnis, our assistant principal, and Mrs. Amy Field, our CRT. They're going to talk about our Families and School Together events. So it's basically our version of parent-teacher conferences, but we, we try to get, we try to do a little bit more with it. So they'll, I don't want to steal their thunder. I'm going to let them explain.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for having us. I first just want to start out by saying, how many of you remember the traditional parent conferences when you were in school? Okay, so for me, my mom had the big monthly calendar up. She had in bold, if PTA, that's what it was called back in the day, was on there. It would be on that day. And I was a chatty Cathy. Some of you might remember that from me in school. So as it got closer to that particular day, my chattiness got less and less and less and less and less, because the outcome of that evening would be dependent on lots of things. So what we have done is we've taken... Okay, so our rationale for that is because the traditional parent conferences, when COVID hit, a lot of things changed. So we had to pivot, because we couldn't do the traditional So we had to pivot, because we couldn't do the traditional parent conferences with the chairs out in the hallway and the closeness with the teacher. So we had to pivot and think of something that would still have the interaction with the parent and the teacher, but also, we wanted to get more involvement. So as a teacher, when I became a teacher, I realized that a lot of the parents sometimes that I needed to see weren't the ones that were coming in. So we needed to change that and make that more accessible and make parents feel more welcome. So our rationale is post-COVID, we wanted to do more of a hybrid model with the traditional parent conferences and the community event feel. So I will let Ms. Field talk about our first event, which is the Big Bash.
Hi there. Yeah, we kick off the school year with the Big Bash. I know many of the schools, if not all the schools, have some kind of version of that. The Snow Hill area schools, for many years, we've been doing it at the same night, at the same time, to make it convenient for families that have kids going to different schools. So they just come out on one night and can kind of hop to any of the schools that they need to go to. And we emphasize that it's kind of a festival vibe with music and food. The kids can get their devices, we started that last year, that they can get their devices that night. This is during our professional week, a couple of days before the kids actually start school. We have clubs and our community partners, which are wonderful. At the high school level, we invite our community partners that obviously pertain to that age group. So at the high school, it's mostly the local colleges, and we have military recruiters. And we also have resources such as the agencies like Jesse's Paddle and the Health Department Preventative Services. We really appreciate the partnerships that we have and what we can offer our students and our families that visit us.
Okay, this is our most popular fast event. So this one takes place in November, like usually the week before Thanksgiving. So we have the most turnout for this event. So we had almost half of our families come to this event. Takes place in our cafeteria. We have, this is sponsored by PBIS. So our PBIS representative posts a sheet in the teacher workroom with all the feast items, you know, the mashed potatoes, the turkey, the macaroni and cheese, the green beans, all of the things that we want our teachers to sign up to bring. Families can also donate. Turkeys are donated. I think churches donate. We have so much food that families sometimes come up two or three times to get more food. So to have the teachers and the parents interact, we told teachers that it would be best if they, two teachers per table in the cafeteria. So if I was coming in and I needed to see Ms. Black, for example, then I would find her sitting at one of the tables, and they usually sat there the whole night. And then the families would go over and sit with her and eat with her, but they would break bread together. So this is one of the most popular ones that we have.
I don't know if we mentioned, we try to have one each quarter. So the next one, the third one of the school year, is in February, and we changed it up last year. We did a refresh. For previous years, we were having what might be considered like a little back-to-school bash for second semester, right at the start of second semester, at the first week of February. And we found, when we were looking at our attendance data, that although it looked like a lot of people were there, because there were a lot of bodies there, it was mostly the kids after sports practice coming, like, hey, food and candy and fun. And we weren't having a lot of parents. So we kind of took a risk and thought about going back, kind of playing around with the idea of having the parents sign up to come and sit down in the classroom. And it was like, well, do the parents, is that really what they want to do? Come and sit down and see where their kids sit in the classroom and see what the classroom looks like? And what we found out is, yes, they absolutely do. So what we did is we combined the idea of a social fun gathering with the parent-teacher conferences and called it Parent Teacher Conference Plus. So the parents could sign up, or they could just show up. They could sign up ahead of time for minute conferences with their teachers. They could walk around the building, they could get food. We had information tables up. In each hallway, we had a department table with decorations for that department and information about any electives for that content area and clubs associated with that. And it worked out really, really nicely. We had raffles, we had music going. So it was a good hybrid.
Also, this particular Parent Teacher Plus conference takes place right in the beginning of the new semester. So it's important for teachers to get to know the new teachers that their students are having also.
Yeah, and we tried to make sure the parents are getting the biggest bang for their buck. So if they're coming in that night, we also had some meetings for the parents of current juniors to see what they could expect for their senior year, because it's such a big year, and things like that. And after this, because we were like, I wonder if this is going to be good, I wonder if this is going to work, we really wanted to get a lot of feedback from the folks that night that attended. And what we found out is that they preferred a mix of small and large events. And they really liked the conferences and being able to have that one-on-one time with the teachers. We know that kids can always contact the teacher and schedule an individual conference anytime, but it's a lot more convenient, I think, when they can plan on doing it one special night. We had more parent attendance than in previous nights. We were really excited about that. And the parents were telling us that they feel like this builds great community. Looking ahead at future events, after we took time to look at comments from all of our stakeholders, kids, parents, and teachers, looking just how we can make it even better, streamline the booking process, maybe make those conferences a little bit longer. And one thing that I thought was interesting is that, and it might be on the next slide, is that parents said that they felt more comfortable with a mix of big and small events, where maybe the first couple of events of the year are those big social gatherings, and they kind of feel comfortable with the school and comfortable with coming in, and then to follow up with the smaller, more intimate conferences. So we were really thrilled with that.
Okay, and then our last event is called the Spring Fling. So it's fondly also called the Mini Bash, because it's very similar to the Big Bash, but we don't have all the three schools having the Big Bash at the same night. So this one takes place in our courtyard in the back of our school. There's a little cutout there. There are lined tables perimeter around the courtyard. Yep, there's Best Chocolate Lynch with her sad kids. We have all the community partners that usually come to the Big Bash. So they are there. We had SAD there, we had Chesapeake Health, Warwick was there, I believe. And then in the center of the courtyard, we have some games, ping pong, cornhole, and then we had the town of Snow Hill donated their Connect Four game for the kids. We also have the Wow Bus out this night. It's parked in the little loop. We have Ms. Black out there giving away school supplies, and we also had our popcorn machine. Sometimes, it was kind of cold that evening, but sometimes the Sunrise Church will also donate their big blowups for us. So sometimes we have those and their snow cone machine. So this is more of a festival feel as well, just like the Big Bash. We also always try to plan it when there is a baseball or softball game, so that students and parents can enjoy the game too. And that those parents that are there watching their kids can also talk to their students' teachers as well. So that is it. Does anybody have any questions for us?
Board members? Mr. Buchanan?
I'd like to sign up for the Thanksgiving dinner.
It's a hit, it's a hit.
Laura, I remember when you first started out, your talk today about the calendar that your parents had, you know, with all the school activities on it. And I remember in school too, it was like PTA night was like doom and gloom. I tried to hide the calendar that my parents had. It didn't work all the time, and they'd always find out. But coming from the classroom also, PTA, it was always hard to get the parents in there. It really was, you know. We always had a kind of an underlying idea that the parents, the ones, the parents who did come, their students were doing great. You know, it was the parents that we really needed to talk to. And making it like a social event or a family affair, which is what we're doing here, makes a lot of sense. Especially in a rural community, I'll just use Pocimoke for an example. It's a time for parents to come to the schools, to see what the schools are doing, bring their kids. It's like an event. And also, they see, parents see other parents. And so it's a social thing. So they get in conversation with, you know, not only the students' parents, but their friends and people in the community. So I think this is a good thing, and I appreciate all the hard work that you've done putting into this.
And Pocimoke does do a lot. I worked at Pocimoke for four years. They do do a lot of the similar events as well.
Any other board members? Dr. Andrews, do you have a comment?
Just great ideas, great concepts. Just always remember, feed them and they will come.
Thank you very much.
We'll provide chicken and dumplings for y'all this year. Okay, chicken and dumplings, coming.
Ms. McGinnis, Ms. Field, thank you again for the presentation. We appreciate the, got that? There we go. Thank you. Now moving back with Dr. Wallace for an MCAP update.
I'm going to welcome Dr. Hamel Ford, and Ms. Shorts and I are going to join him, and Ms. Sarah Blackmer might be joining us in the front also.
Dr. Hamel, welcome. I know you have numbers for us today.
While they're getting ready, let me say that our teams do a tremendous job. And the reason that Dr. Wallace and Ms. Shorts are sitting at the table is because they're both in charge of curriculum in our schools. Obviously Dee in the elementary years and middle, and then Dr. Wallace in the high school years. So their input and working with our teams and our principals, several are in the room today, together is why we continue to do so well on our MCAP scores. And I want to thank all of you, principals that are here today, coordinators that are in the room today, Dr. Wallace, Ms. Shorts, and Tom for your work on the data that's consistently working. And I appreciate all that you do to make things happen for the positive of our school system.
There we go. Hello, hello? Can you hear me now? So thank you so much for allowing me to come to you and spread the good word of our MCAP performance. This is my third year, I think, coming before you and talking about MCAP. And I am excited to talk about the accomplishments that we have and talk a little bit about the work we have yet to do. So you have likely seen something similar to this already, but this is basically the third, the 2024 column was our proficiency rate. Now proficiency is a three or a four on the MCAP exam for each one of those grade levels. And as you can see, for the most part, for ELA, this is ELA, we are near 70% in all but fifth grade. And you'll see in a few moments, that fifth grade is a statewide concern, and I think it's actually a national concern. It's that inflection point. For math, you can see as well, our performance, our third graders at nearly 70%, really one of the crowning jewels of the state. Nobody's really getting close to that. And so forth and so on. Some of our numbers are 36, 39%, but I do want to point out that 42.9% in math '08 is one of the highest in the state. And actually, Stephen Kater Middle School had the highest math '08 proficiency rate in the entire state of Maryland, out of about 800 schools. And so definitely deserve laudits for that. So that's our performance, and then we have also, just one other thing I just wanted to talk about. So for math, one of the things that we look a lot at is how our internal metrics are sort of matching what the state is showing us on the MCAP exams. And one of our biggest internal metrics is the iReady assessments. Kids three through eight are given it in both, three times a year, in math and in ELA. And from that, we're able to get a sense for when kids are on grade level or not on grade level, and if they need additional support. So I took a look at the winter iReady, which happens probably about a month, a month and a half before the actual MCAP exam. And when I looked at that, like for instance with Math 5, we had almost 60% of our students either early or mid-grade, right? But that was somehow translating into 43% pass rate in Math 5. Math 6, we had about 55% translating into a 36%, and in Math 7, we had 52% translating into 39%. So it suggests that there is perhaps a disconnect between what iReady is measuring and what the state is possibly measuring. It's an interesting thing, because when you look at iReady as a whole, and I've looked at three years' worth of data, it correlates very well to the MCAP. Those of you who are mathies kind of people, correlations of .8, .7, so very strong correlations. So it's interesting when we see these departures between what is described as on-grade level and yet here's what the state is telling us with regards to on-grade level. You have of course seen this as well. This was the chart that the state shared on August 27, demonstrating the counties ranked, and of course, Worcester came out on top. In ELA, when you looked at all of the tests, and you can see that the margin wasn't even all that close, about five percentage points to the next closest competitor, which was Carroll County. Mathematics, we came in second. I'm going to talk about that here in a moment though, to Howard County, the gap though was really small, about a point and a half percent. So I want to show you now, this is the proficiency rate, so this is ELA. So the orange dots are us, and the blue dots are the state, and the little dots are each of our individual schools. Okay, so the orange dots, for instance, are you able to see my cursor? Yeah, excellent. Okay, so you can see here that, for instance, in ELA '03, which is what this first one is, we're at over a 70% pass rate, whereas the state average was well below 50. Okay, and so you can see, just visually looking at the gaps between what we as a county have been doing and what the state has performing, we're definitely setting the bar for excellence in the state of Maryland. And I mentioned before that sort of dip that seems to happen in ELA 5, and you can see that it is reflective in the state data as well. Their dip doesn't seem as extreme, but that's mainly because they don't have quite as far to fall, right? We had a lot more, we had a higher place to start from, and so any dips are going to look a lot more severe. This is the math data, same sort of situation with proficiency compared to, or the proficiency rates of us versus the state for each one of the Math 3 through 8 assessments. And again, you can see there's a very healthy gap between where we are performing and where the state is performing. And one thing I would like to point out in particular is when we get into Math 6, 7, and 8, that there's a downward trend in proficiency rates at the state level, one that we are not experiencing, one that we are overcoming. As a district, you can see that we're actually bouncing back at that fifth grade inflection point.
Dr. Hamel, I hate to interrupt you, but can I ask you a question?
You can always ask me a question.
While we're going through this, this testing is not meant to be 100% test. So you know, the fact that we're at 70%, obviously, it's measuring how well the students are doing at understanding the material, but not necessarily that it has to be 100% to be an A. Or I just want to make sure you educate the public.
Yeah, so when we're looking at tests, not to get too much into the psychometric weeds, but basically, what ends up happening is the state looks at all of the questions. It identifies how difficult each question is, and then it looks at how And then it looks at how each student performed on each of those questions. And through some magic, uh, basically comes up with a, uh, what's called an I Theta score, which then gets translated to a scaled score. So in practicality, you might be looking at a, a test of 50 questions, a student getting 20 questions right, and that is translating into them passing, just depending upon how the test works out. The other thing to keep in mind with the MCAP is that especially, on the math side in particular, is that it's all computer adaptive at this point. So what's happening is the students are taking the answer or question. If they get it right, the next question is supposed to be a little bit harder. And if they get that one right, the next one's a little bit harder. And if they get that one wrong, then they get kind of, it goes back a little bit. And it uses that in order to sort of figure out where that student is, uh, in terms of score.
Thank you.
Yep. So this is, uh, our actual rankings by each of the grade levels. And you can see that this is for math first, um, for everything except math five and math six. And I also want to point out that last one. So if you look at our math scores and you look all the way from math three, all the way through algebra two, we're number one in the state. It's only when you add geometry that Howard overtakes us. And if you're curious as to why, Howard County tests about 1,300 middle schoolers in geometry. And as you can imagine, that is likely going to be the cream of the crop and they run about a 70% pass rate. And so it ult- it ultimately helps to boost the numbers. It was interesting to us this year that the state decided to report math as a big glob like that. Generally it's three to eight. Um, and it, it didn't benefit us, uh, on that chart, uh, but there is more to the story. ELA, uh, similar, we had two, two instances where, um, the state, the, we were not number one in the state. But as you can see, when you start banding, three to five, six to eight and three to eight, again, we have top proficiency rates in the state. This is gonna be the last, like proficiency thing I talk about, and I, I can't share too much of this. I'm actually, this isn't for public review, but I wanted to give you a sense for one of the tools that we use when we're thinking about student performance on these assessments. So the state gives us, and basically it's questions one through 49 of an assessment. So this might be ELA three, for instance, okay? And they rank them from hardest to easiest. And then they pr- give us the percentage of students, which is the blue dot that got the question right. The green dot is the percentage of our students who got the question right. And as you can see, in almost every case, our green dots are well above the state. So even when we start talking, and even when we start talking about these really difficult questions that are on the left part hand part of this, uh, graph here, our students are still outperforming the state on those difficult questions. Yes, and it does ultimately, you can act, break these down by standard as well. Uh, and the questions themselves, uh, lend themselves to being able to look at by standard. And so we are then able to take that and we say, you know, whatever standard question 38 applied to, that's obviously an area that we want to look at curricularly and something that, um, our coordinators would definitely take a look at.
Yeah, and there's been some conversation out there about suggestions about, uh, what we do to improve our assessment scores. And so we just added this slide to show the board and our community the level of detail that we go into, um, to make sure that our teachers are teaching the right content, that we're hitting the right standards. I mean, you're talking about looking at a chart here who show, that shows exactly how our students performed on, on, on this whole set of questions. And looking, our coordinators like Ms. Blackburn, who are sitting here with me, I mean, we're talking about this level of detail. So this is ELA, I believe. So Ms. Hamborsky would be the person looking specifically at this slide. But Sarah and her staff are looking at these things. They're re-recalibrating our curriculum. They're going back and training teachers on this. Um, so certainly we welcome all feedback on how to do better. But I just wanted the community to be aware, because again, there has been some statements out there made about suggestions about what we can do. We're going into far deeper depth, um, than, than anyone could possibly probably imagine, which is why we wanted to share this slide with you today.
Yes, Mr. Gory?
My eyes are really old.
Speaking of the mic.
My eyes are really old, but it appears to be that there's one green dot below the blue line. Is that the day Mr. Green serves turkey? What fell apart there?
Definitely one of those confounding indicators we may need to look at.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Smack? Mr. Smack has a question? Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Dr. Hamel.
So that's our performance. And we always have a tendency to like really focus on those top lines. But when we start thinking about what is an effective school system? An effective school system isn't just a kid that can take a kid, or, uh, a school system that can take a kid who's in third grade, reading at a third grade level and get him to the fourth grade. And by the end of fourth grade, they're reading at a fourth grade level. That's expected progress. That's what you should be doing, right? To me, and I think to a lot of my colleagues, the real, um, sign of an effective school system are those that are able to take things that are out of our control and mitigate them. So in this case, I'm gonna take a look at poverty and just show how Worcester handles poverty. All right, let's see here. There we go. So this was a, uh, this is third grade proficiency rates for four different states. And we go from, um, low poverty to high poverty. And then we go proficiency up, up through the top, right? So we have Mississippi, Texas, Michigan, Pennsylvania. So across all four of these states, there is a common story. The poorer the school is, the lower the performance, okay? And I have said it here before, that you can show me the farms rate, the, uh, economically disadvantaged rate of a school, and I'll probably be able to give you a good sense of where that school performs without knowing anything else about the school. It's that strong of an indicator.
I'm gonna add something to that. And we often talk about our students of color, and certainly they are a focus for us. But at this point, the date, the, the state has gone into in-depth research around this. Tom has just showed you a slide from across the country. Um, but it, there is no question that it is the leading factor. Poverty is the leading factor on student performance. So I just wanted to make sure that it's not just Worcester, it's, it's the country. Um, and so it's, it's fascinating what Tom's getting ready to share with you.
So, and this is Maryland. Um, we have one gold dot in Maryland. I'm gonna give you a guess, which school system you think that one gold dot is. That's right, it's Worcester, all right? Um, that we're just hanging out there. We have with, based upon our poverty rate, they would expect our overall proficiency rate to be somewhere around 50%. And we're, uh, up above 70% uh, for third grade reading proficiency. Um, and so again, we are just a, an example of, as a, as a district, we are pushing forward, but it isn't just our districts. So this is math three through eight. I took a look at two years' worth of data and I looked at every school in the state and I looked at their economically disadvantaged rate. And I looked at their proficiency rate, like what profi- what level of proficiency they scored on the math three through eight assessments, okay? And then I ran a regression and I figured out a line of best fit, right? And so this, that red line is essentially the prediction, right? If we had, uh, you know, this level of poverty, we would expect this amount of achievement. So when I plot all of the schools in the state on that same graph, you can see that it does trend downward that we did, that there is a linear relationship there, right? That again, more poverty tends to result in less performance. When I plot our schools on there, you can see, yes, that is the right reaction. Um, that it is, um, I, I don't even know how to describe it, to be honest with you. Um, I've been in education for nearly 20 years at this point. Um, and it is, and I, all of them in Worcester. And I think that of all the things that I am most proud of, of working in Worcester, is that somehow this county, and I don't think it's magic, but I do think somehow this county has managed to make it so that poverty is not prophecy. Um, and I think that this data helps us to see that. When you see a school, for instance, and, and it, there's always a, there's always a, like, there's always a, um, a balancing act here, right? Ocean City Elementary has done phenomenal. I mean, there's just, there's no other way to look at Ocean City Elementary's, uh, performance and say that's anything. Snoha Elementary, anything less than phenomenal, right? Uh, but Pokemoke Elementary with their level of poverty is sort of sticking out there as a fairly extreme outlier. And I like to think of it like, well, in terms of football, if I, if I can, right? If the Stephen Decatur High School football team from last year are state champions, went and played the Maryland Terps and won, that would be pretty freaking impressive, right? Wouldn't expect it, but you expect the Terps to win. They have a lot of advantages. They're a great team, well, I don't know if they're a great team, but they're a team, right?
They're doing pretty good.
Working hard, right? Working hard. Um, and you would just expect by nature of the advantages they have to succeed, right? And so if Stephen Decatur were able to go up and beat on the Terps, it would be really noteworthy and I would, I would, that is what, so when I point out a school like Pokemoke Elementary School, that's what I think of. I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to ever denigrate the performance of any of the other schools. Uh, because as you can see, all of our schools are well above that red line. All of our schools are outperforming their poverty indicators in math.
Can I say something? I want to say something to the board, but I, I most importantly want to say something to our community, um, out there who's watching this today. This is a testament to the support that we get from our Board of Education. And I'm gonna steal our PR person's words. We are defying expectations. We are changing the lives of students by teaching them to read. And it's a, it's a testament to the support of our Board of Education every day for coming in and, and allowing us to do our jobs and believing in our kids and believing in every single kid, because honestly, this deserves a round of applause. This, this is a unicorn. I said this last year and we continue to be a unicorn. Um, there is, there is nothing, I get goosebumps looking at it. Uh, we knew what it was gonna be because we expected it. We are continuing to work hard. We have work to do. Do not get us wrong. But I'm telling you, every school system in the country gets Title I funding. Every school. That's Title I funding is funding that goes to schools where a percentage of students live, come from homes of poverty and, and some other factors that play in when you get to, to different levels of the high school. No one is doing this. That's why when you look at Worcester, we're a gold star. You keep hearing about Mississippi. Look at Mississippi in comparison to where Worcester County Star sits. We are an anomaly. It's a testament to our community. So I want to thank you. I want to thank our parents. I want to thank our teachers. I want to thank our administrators and our coordinators because we are doing great work. We are doing great work.
I want to add to that. I'm sitting here about ready to jump out of my seat and I'm glad, uh, Dr. Wallace brought that up. And I second everything she said. But from a superintendent's perspective, my challenge, I got great staff. I got great people that sit in front of you. I got great principals who sit out there. But I'm gonna give credit where credit's to do. I've been in this school system for 41 years. And until John Andes arrived and held us accountable for data. And I remember him walking in my office and saying, and I said, and asked us how we were doing. I'd say, good. He said, how do you know? I said, because I see it every day. He says, how do you know? And we started on a track of examining data every day in our schools. And, um, this board, I agree, that allows us to do our work. Uh, they don't sit out and, and, and dream of things that they think might be right. They let the research speak for itself. And then my challenge has been, this isn't anything I've done special, but my challenge has been to number one, maintain or surpass high levels of achievement because it started under that guy. Make no bones about it. It started and I learned from that guy how to hold people accountable. And then my staff sitting before you and the principals sitting out here are very intense when they do their work. To the point when I go in and see, I don't have to ask those questions again. They're prepared and they show us what they do. And then our teachers, our teachers, it's tough to be a teacher today. It's tough because of the accountability factor, both from the local level, i.e. the superintendent and staff, and the state. But as Dr. Wallace said, I am more proud of what Worcester County does. And the great thing about it, I get hundreds of phone calls and emails from our parents thanking us. I really do. And so to the parents out there, thank you for what you continue to do because we hear it all the time. And that's what allows us to continue to do our work. But this process of outstanding scores and service started under John Andes. And I'm telling it like it is. And then my challenge as superintendent to pass Dr. Andes is to maintain. And that's tough too, because these people have to roll their sleeves up and we've, we've already got a standard. We got a standard right here. We're trying to stay here or get here. And that's not always easy. And so again, um, I couldn't be more proud, Tom, of the work and, and, uh, ladies and principals sitting out here that you do every single day. And we are outstanding in Worcester. And I'll close by saying, we still have work to do. We're not perfect. We got a lot of work to do. And as long as this team sits before you, we will keep pushing. But we are, we are, we are performing and I'm darn proud of the work and what Worcester County Public Schools represents.
So, yep, I agree a hundred percent with that.
Can I have a quick question too?
Yeah.
Um, when it comes to Title I funding, I know, Dr. Wallace, you said that a number of our schools do receive that. Can you guys give a couple examples of how we utilize that Title I funding? What it goes for?
Sure.
Yes, we have three school-wide Title I schools, so they receive all the funding. There's Snoha Elementary, Pokemoke Elementary and Buckingham Elementary School. And most of it goes to additional staffing. I'll be very honest, it's about $2,100,000 this year. Um, and most of it goes to additional staffing. Sometimes it reduces class sizes. Sometimes it's for additional coaches to help because there's a lot of research around instructional coaches and how they help, um, uh, the performance of students when they can work with teachers one-on-one in the classrooms. Um, but most of it goes to that. There's miscellaneous monies left over for materials of instruction that does not go to the non-Title I schools. So it might be extra workbooks. It might be things that non-Title I schools can't afford. Consultants possibly, professional learning, possibly conferences, very few. But those are the type of things, but the majority of the money goes to people.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so I am well over my time. So I'm just gonna go.
No, no. You have plenty of time.
Um, so that was math, right? Um, and the story doesn't really change. Um, it, this is ELA, three through eight, with all of our schools plotted on there once again, okay? And the further north they are of that red line, the more of a outlier they are. The more surprising it is, uh, that that school is able to perform at that level, given their rates of poverty. This is for just ELA 10. All of our schools above the line. This is Algebra I at just the high school level. And I think there's a, there's two really interesting things here. One is that, uh, the most of the state is below 20% um, for high school algebra, okay? Um, whether or not that's because they actually can't do the algebra or something else is going on, I, I, I can't necessarily venture a guess, but it does seem rather suspect. Um, the other, of course, is that our schools, again, all are above the line, well above the line. And then last, this is, uh, Algebra I, um, for middle school. Uh, and again, all of our schools, I mean, just 100, I mean, uh, so I had to cap it at 98% because we don't actually, they don't tell us on the state file what the actual value is. Uh, but I know it's 100%. Um, so Stephen Decatur Middle and Pokemoke Middle both had 100% pass rate, um, in their, uh, Algebra I courses. And you, you would expect a middle school Algebra I pass rate to be high because you're expecting that you're getting the advanced kids in eighth grade taking Algebra I. And so even when we start looking at our more advanced kids, e- even still in, uh, thinking about poverty, we're still outperforming our indicators. Um, even when we consider poverty, even amongst our more gifted children. All right, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer them.
I got one for you, Tom. With these great results that we're getting here, have, have we, uh, received any inquiries from any other counties in the state of Maryland in regard to, how do you do this?
Yes, I'm gonna let Sarah talk actually a little bit about some of this.
Okay, Sarah Blackburn, I'm the math coordinator, um, for K to 12. Um, we have certainly received, um, several, um, requests from prin- uh, principals, from superintendents, asking exactly, um, what we're doing in math and ELA as well. Um, last school year, we had over 70, um, district leaders here in Worcester County from all over the state, um, from every LEA in the state, um, to come see our elementary mathematics program. over the state, from every LEA in the state, to come see our elementary mathematics program and what we do. They'd had school visits and then some professional learning as well. So there has been quite a lot.
And Mr. Bill, let me also tell you that, as you know, I attend state superintendent meetings once a month. And when the scores first come out, I had six or seven superintendents that came to me after the meeting and asked me about what we were doing and asked me if I minded if we contacted someone to come down and meet with our people to talk about what we're doing. So I hear one-on-one from quite a few superintendents in the state of Maryland also.
And to take that one step further, when you do have these people reaching out to you, what, what is your discussion with them? What are, what are we doing as a county, whether in ELA or in mathematics, that we are coming way above all these other counties? What is our secret recipe? If we're able to divulge a secret recipe in open session?
We might have to. Not you, Katie, but anybody else. We might. We actually were interviewed on Fox. I don't know if you saw the Fox channel. And I think the, the secret to our success really, and Mr. Taylor is very accurate. We had a really strong foundation about 20 years ago, but we've built on that. And we have excellent professional learning communities where our teachers have time during the day to get together and talk about professional duties and how, how their kids are doing, look at data, and plan assessments together, internal assessments, and work from there. We have wonderful professional learning opportunities for our teachers. We have excellent curriculum and programs and our coaching opportunities. Again, we keep going back to the coaching that we're able to do within the classrooms. But back when I was a teacher, we pretty much were handed a program and kind of like, "Good luck," until maybe a consultant came back 90 days later, or if we were lucky, maybe professional learning happened mid-year. Now we have coaches that go into the classroom and work with new teachers or veteran teachers around new programs and things that we're implementing. And, you know, there's nothing like getting that help real time when you're working. So we feel like that is, that's just amazing for us. We also have an excellent new teacher program. I mean, there's just so many things I really feel like we do right. And I think what is frustrating, not to bring back to something that's frustrating, but Tom hit it, is that all of our internal mechanisms for ELA are lining up wonderfully with I-Ready and all of our internal assessments are still so aligned with ELA. It's the math that we're still not getting that internal alignment. So that's kind of why we brought Sarah here today, to say that even though we know that, you know, 40-some percent may not look like a great number. It's not out of 100, as Mr. Ferrante said, but it is not matching our internal assessments, which is what people across the state are saying, that it's not matching what we're doing. And it was pre-COVID, pre-changing the assessment. So we're hoping that the state hears that from the locals. And we're hoping that we start looking at either how the assessment, now, granted, the teachers have written assessments, part of it is teacher-written, which is wonderful. So we hope we start looking at the assessment, possibly how it is scored, maybe how it is timed. I'm not a psychometrician. My friend here is. He plays one during the day. But we don't know all these things, but it's not just Worcester County. Not, so it's very difficult to see your internal mechanisms not lined up when it is for ELA and they're the same standards. And we use I-Ready in grades K, pretty much, K to 8, which is our universal screener. And in the high school, they use benchmarks and other things through the programs. And those are all still aligned and good determinants of how we should be performing. And then with math, it comes back so different. But it's not just Worcester County. These questions are coming up all over the state. And again, we're not the ones who can make the decision. I know Dr. Wright is looking at changing the entire testing program, that she's not happy with the, the program and wants to make some changes this year. We're not giving the KRA. I, I don't know if the board knows that for our, for our early learners, so things are changing. But it is frustrating, because Sarah came to our last board meeting and showed you a little bit about how challenging the math assessments are. So they're not, I know we hear often, well, our kids are only doing reading, writing, and basic arithmetic at 40%. This is sad state. That, that's not what these assessments are. They're very challenging assessments. But still, if they matched our internal assessments, we'd be saying, "There's a problem with our curriculum. There's a problem with our, what we're doing in the classroom." And we're just not able to do that at this point. So we have a good secret sauce, we think, but it is, there are some frustrations on our end.
And I'll add that it isn't just, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I'll add that it isn't just our internal markers that are telling us that. We also have external markers. For example, our AP enrollment is higher than it's ever been in English and math and other subjects. And our, our achievement on those AP exams is rising in addition to rising enrollment. We have the highest enrollment ever. And I would venture to say, we've not looked at AP, but I would say we're probably as high as we've ever been with increasing enrollment, which is something that no one does. No one increases enrollment and increases scores at the same time. Our dual enrollment is through the roof. I don't know what percentage to say dual enrollment is up, but I would say an upwards of 300% in our county. That's just a guess off the top of my head. And our kids are being successful in those classes. When we looked at what our kids were doing in dual enrollment classes, they are passing those classes with very high marks. And so it isn't just I-Ready. I-Ready is a huge part of it, because that's a big deal and a big part of our school system. But it's also those, those external things like dual enrollment and AP that are telling us, "We have more kids enrolled in dual enrollment ever before and they're doing well." So it's telling us in math and English, those, those, those scores specifically in math, but that, that is not an accurate measure of what our kids know.
Right.
And, and I just want to add one more thing to that. When you, your question, Ms. Addis, what are we doing? The big thing is that changed several years ago, where, and when Dr. Andes came, where we're introducing strategies for us to use. I'll give you an example, as a former high school principal, and I'll tell you where we are today. We were looking at class as a whole. We were looking at grade level bands as a whole. We started under his leadership of, of breaking it down to individual students. That was a strategy that we took even deeper than we were using, because at the time, 20 years ago, I was a high school principal. And so I would say strategies, to your question, is what we share with other counties, the strategies we use. Now, because times change, and you can't do the same thing you did two years ago, this team and our principals have to constantly make adjustment to those strategies. And so they're ever-changing. I can tell you that what we were doing two years ago, we're, we're looking at programming. We're looking at curriculum that we use with those kids constantly. That's why the board sees a new curriculum that's coming forward under the leadership of this team and our instructional people. So I think the biggest thing that, that generally speaking, looking at the 10,000-foot level, is that we talk to other school systems, but what we're talking is what we're doing every day and how to adjust our strategies to meet the needs of the kids, because kids change. And so we've got a, these ladies and gentlemen sitting in the audience and before you have to constantly look at that. And when I say constantly, I'm talking daily. It, it blows my mind to see what they're having to do every day to make these adjustments. But the biggest, the biggest thing that I think it's, it's, as Dee said, our secret sauce. It's not really our secret sauce. It's the depth of the strategies that's making a difference in the achievement of our kids. It's the depth of it, how far down we go. Not only do we look at an individual child's performance, but we look at all the factors of that child that will determine that performance. It's intense work, as they've described today. It, it blows me away and, and, and it's very draining. It's very tiresome. It's very tough on teachers. But also, another part of my job is to make sure that all of them come together to make that commitment to take a child where they need to go. And it's, it's, it's amazing to stand back and watch it in action. And as I said, my number one challenge is, we're here, according to the Maryland assessments. Staying there is, is tough too. So we have to do that or we'll, we'll fall. And, and I'm just so proud of this school system and proud of the people who make the difference in the lives of our kids with that every day. So just to sum it up, and I'll be quiet, it's, it's taking the depth of the strategies and working on them to get performance at a high level with our kids.
Thank you. I had one more question too. Just for clarification, these last charts, we're talking about less poverty and, and more poverty. But all of our students are taking this test, not just the ones that are within that poverty level, correct?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, what you find is that, like, for instance, a school that has 50, 50% of its students who are in poverty, when you look at the school's total proficiency rates, those rates are going to be lower, the higher that overall poverty level is. But yes, absolutely, all of our students are taking these assessments.
Those charts that Tom just shared are not what you just asked, though. Because what you just asked was, "Are they just our students in poverty taking it?" That's not what these slides tell us. These slides tell us, these slides tell us where the performance of a school who had this percent, every school gets a percentage, whatever it is, 90%, 20%, 30%, and that's where the whole school performs.
Right, right. And last thing too, the first two slides that you showed us, they weren't part of our, our slides that we received. And are we able to receive those?
Absolutely, yes. I added those after a weekend.
They were really good, that's why.
Yeah. I was, I was in the shower this weekend and I said, "Wait a minute, I didn't put any performance data in there." So I wanted to make sure I included that.
Thank you.
I just have to say one more thing too. Probably the slide that makes me the happiest was the recognition around third-grade reading. I mean, to be pulled out, I mean, we all know the research around, if a child reads by third grade, no offense, our math coordinator, but if a child reads by third grade, just the opportunities that are available, that are not available for kids that aren't reading by third grade, I mean, that is just unbelievable. So just so very proud of our system.
Any other questions? Dr. Andes?
I'll let you go first. No, I wanted to thank everyone for that comprehensive report and everything that you're doing. And I like to, what I heard today was, "We're not satisfied where we are." That we're constantly looking at student achievement, individual student achievement, and making determinations at the classroom level, at the school level, what services we can mobilize to move that student forward. And it doesn't matter if the student's proficient, or super-duper proficient, or super-duper quad proficient, wherever they happen to be, we're going to work. And we're not satisfied. We're hungry to make a difference. And that's what I, I heard everyone say today. So I commend the entire team. I echo the sentiments of our superintendent, that it's the people who make a difference. And that's been the model, a slogan of Worcester County Public Schools for a long time. And it's the people who make the difference each and every day. Sometime, not today. I would like you to, someone to share with us the type of report a parent gets from these results. Not today, but at some point in time. Because I'm interested to see exactly, if I'm a parent, what kind of information do I get back that informs me as a parent as to how my child is doing on the MCAP assessments at some point in time? Final comment, my grandsons attend Howard County Public Schools. So I don't want to tell you what I did, but I did a lot of na-na, boo-boo, we beat you. So congratulations, just whatever you do, keep beating Howard County Public Schools. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. McCombs?
Just a thought, and, oh my gosh, there is no way to say thank you enough. I understand how time-consuming this can be, especially when you're doing data dives, as I used to call them. We have so many outstanding teachers and staff. And I also need to point out that as, and I did this as a teacher, and I've said that before, when you have smaller class sizes, I can reach those kids. I can reach every one of them. And that makes such a huge difference. And I'd honestly just like to quietly add that into our success formula, because I honestly, truly believe that is why we have been so successful.
I think I would agree with you. That's, that's a huge part of our recipe for success. And you, as much as any board member I've ever worked with, come in and ask tough questions about curriculum. You've sat down probably with almost every single coordinator here, maybe not Sarah yet, but almost every single coordinator in our central office, at some point during your tenure, you have sat down with them and asked them tough questions. And we always appreciate that from you as a former educator, as someone who, who challenges our thinking. But yes, absolutely, our class, small class sizes are a huge part of that recipe for success. Our investment, when you look at the investment of Worcester County in education, it's certainly a piece of that recipe for success. And our small class sizes are what drive that cost up. It's interesting to see, though, look at what those other school districts, I believe it's maybe Somerset and Dorchester that spend more than us, and their performance is, is not, is not where our performance is. And so it isn't just spending more money. We're, we are taking the money that our county government so generously supports and the budget that you all pass, and we are doing right by kids with that money. And so we are being very responsible from a financial standpoint of the money that's given to us, to, to focus on specifically small class sizes, high-quality curriculum, those types of things.
Any, any other questions? First of all, keep bringing us the great analytics, Dr. Hamel. We appreciate it. And Ms. Blackburn, thanks for what you do. It's certainly nice to be able to look up that board and see us up at the top. And I know there's no complacency here. So we want to continue to work. And, you know, what gets measured gets managed. And you guys are doing a great job of it. We appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Shortz, I'm going to take your time. I'm going to turn it back over to you.
I'm actually going to show a slide.
Okay. For the blueprint update.
Ah, yes. Yes, so a very brief blueprint update, but I did want to share with you, as you know, or I think you know, we've been working since May 1st to complete our, our blueprint, I'm trying to do too much here, boardroom, there we go, to complete our plan. We turned it in May 1st and we're still getting feedback. One of the questions that I thought it might be nice for you to look at, although the plan is posted on our website, is question 23. Because this is the question that, remember I shared with you that we applied to work with AFTN, which is the Technical Assistance Grant that the AIB offered for us. So this is, let me see if I can make this bigger. This is question 23, and this is the question that is still outlying for us, that we just received feedback, we turned it in May 1st, and we just received feedback on. And this is the question that AFTN will be working with us around, and it really is a huge question. I didn't want you to think that these questions were itty-bitty-tiny. And there really are three pieces of the success criteria that we're working around. But basically, it's how are you using the allocations that you have with new resources and the ones that, and how are you reallocating existing resources, which we've talked about before. And AFTN is, is the persons or is the company that's hopefully going to help us with that minimal school funding requirements of that 75%. That's one of the biggest pieces of their jobs. So we did receive feedback on that. On a couple of the success criteria, we need to make some tweaks on that. And that will be due back to them, I believe, on November 1st, if I'm, November 12th. So we are continuing to work on that. There will not be another plan this year. Usually we have a 100-page plan due at some time during the year. What the AIB would like to do, this plan will be for now to 2027. And what we'll do in between is just make updates and provide updates to the AIB on how we're doing with these 23 questions. This is the final question. But we are excited that we did work with AFTN. Vince is kind of my right and left arm around this, and I think he would echo that, that they, they seem to be, even though they're a large company out of Chicago, they, they are, it's the educational piece of this company that we're working with. So hopefully, it will be a company worth working with. But I just wanted to let you know that we still are presently working on that plan. And that is question 23. So another update for you and something that kind of tags along, you know, we had ERT visits last year, which are ERT visits last year, which are the expert review teams, which are part of the blueprint, and something that's worth pointing out is, last year, three of our elementary schools that were visited were all the high-performing, they were Ocean City, Pokemoke, and Snow Hill Elementary, they were all considered Criteria III, which was highest performing. So, we didn't know if we'd have any additional schools visited, because they're focusing on math and reading for early elementary grades again, so we thought, oh, we may not get any other visits. But we did, we got two schools actually chosen, one was for an interesting visit, it's a CTE visit that Dr. Wallace and Dr. Phillips will be heading up over at the Tech Center, and it'll be on October 16th. It's a little different than a standard expert review team visit, but they'll be looking into the CTE realm over there. The more standard ERT visit will be at Pokemoke Middle School this year, and it'll be around math, just in fourth and fifth grade, and we haven't chosen a date for that yet, we're still going through the process of that, but it'll be math inclusion. So, again, Sarah Blackburn and myself will be involved in that, as well as Ms. Freestat, I think she might have left, will, will be involved in that two-day visit, and we'll give you more information as we choose a time and date for that visit. But that's really all of the updates we have, unless you have any questions around anything blueprint at this point.
Yes, Katie?
I just had one question.
Yes.
I know that we had received someone to work with through the AIB, have we utilized their help with anything thus far, or, is that all it was, okay?
Yep, that's the AFTN, and I, I probably should do more slides around that.
Sorry, thank you.
No, 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 it's hard to keep it, believe me, Ms. Addis, it's hard to keep it all straight. That's the AFTN people that we are very pleased with right now, we're still working on our, not really MOU, it's kind of initial plan with them, which is due, it's around this question 23, so.
Perfect.
Yes, so, the initial scope of work was thirty thousand dollars that we're working on with them, but we think that that will exceed that, so we're excited for that work. So, yes, AFTN, we'll, we'll get to know them, hopefully, very well.
Any other questions? Okay.
That concludes.
Shorts, thank you very much.
Yes, then that concludes Curriculum and Instruction.
Okay, now I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Appel for the Personnel Exhibit.
Thank you. Mr. Frante, your September Personnel Exhibit for your recommend, your review is as follows. Resignations, Shelby Derrickson, Educational Assistant, Buckingham Elementary School, Ebony Jenkins, Educational Assistant, Pokemoke Elementary School, Suhad Ramadan, Educational Assistant, Berlin Intermediate School. New hires, Rosiah Ballard, Educational Assistant, Pokemoke Elementary School, Rahim Hammond, Educational Assistant, Snow Hill High School, Justin Powell, Educational Assistant, Stephen Decatur High School, Steven Sides, HVAC Technician, Central Office. Promotions, Linda Height, Secretary, Grade Five, Ten Month, at Snow Hill Middle School, and Jesse Sadler, Secretary, Grade Four, Ten Month, at Snow Hill High School. Superintendent recommends approval of the Personnel Exhibit as presented.
Can I have a motion to approve the Personnel Exhibit and a second as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. McComas?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Gordy, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Dr. Appel, I'll stay with you.
Thank you. As a function of the Board, we come to you each September and announce our negotiating team, that will be representing the Board of Education, the contract between the Teachers' Union and the Board states that we will begin our negotiations in November, so for your information, the Board of Education team, that's going to be negotiating with the Worcester Teachers' Union, is myself as Chief Negotiator, Mr. Vince Tolbert, Dr. Annette Wallace, Ms. Denise Shorts, Dr. Michael Brown, and Dr. Amy Gallagher. The team that will be negotiating on the Board's behalf for the support unit would be myself as Chief Negotiator, Mr. Vince Tolbert, Dr. Annette Wallace, Ms. Denise Shorts, Mr. Sam Slakem, and Mr. Otis Collins, as well as Dr. Matthew Record, that's for your information. I have, have spoken with Beth Shockley Lynch, and they will be having their team announced at our next Board meeting.
Great, thank you for that update, appreciate that. And now I'm gonna move, we've already done 7.3, I'm gonna move to Fiscal Operations and turn it over to Mr. Tolbert.
Safety update.
We, I'm sorry, Dr. Wallace didn't mean to miss you.
No, that's okay.
Safety update.
Um, just, I know that we, you know, we signed our memorandum of understanding today for another year, we had excellent first-day visits, along with the Sheriff and Chief Deputy who joined us, as well as leadership, that Mr. Taylor mentioned earlier, September 25th is our first district-wide safety meeting. We will be working this year on developing a mission and vision, and goals that are strategic for our District-Wide Safety Committee, and we are also working on our two-hundred-thousand-dollar safety grant that is due September 30th. I know Dr. Cook was here earlier, he's working with Mr. Sean Goddard and myself on that safety grant, which will be submitted on the 30th of September. So, back to you, Mr. Frante.
Thank you, any questions for Dr. Wallace? Thank you for that update. Now I'll turn it over to Mr. Tolbert for Fiscal Operations.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Frante. We have several items today under Fiscal Operations, the first three are under Mr. Joe Price, our Facilities Planner, the first one is the recommendation of our Buckingham Elementary School Work Group Committee. Mr. Price?
Good afternoon, Mr. Price. History for the first time in 24 years, I actually have a lot to say today.
Great. Mr. Price, can you pull that mic up for you? Thank you, sir.
Better?
Yeah, that's great. We think it's, needs to be turned on.
Download.
Perfect, thank you.
Go ahead, Carrie. I want to thank my IT Supervisor, Carrie, in advance.
Little history of the Buckingham Project, we completed a feasibility study in December of '22, and then we spent the next two years trying to get the state to approve a design or construction funding approval for the project, and as you remember, they did not because we had allegedly 799 empty seats at Shawil Ocean City and Berlin Intermediate. After going through that for nearly eighteen months, the IAC met with the Board of Ed and the County Commissioners, and came up with four different options to try to get us to move forward. In May of '24, the Board of Ed formed a work group to work with the IAC for a mechanism to get the project to move forward. And this is the work group, I want to thank each member of the work group for their time and expertise. We only had three meetings, and we came to a unanimous decision about what option we were going to present to the Superintendent, and you're hearing that option today. The five options reviewed by the work group, option one was combine Buckingham and Berlin Intermediate into one school. We had issues with this, because we don't believe that either the Buckingham site or the Berlin Intermediate site could handle a school large enough for twelve hundred students, and we'd have three-year-old pre-K students attending school with sixth graders. Option two was to combine Buckingham Replacement School, followed by Berlin Intermediate Replacement School. The only issue we had with this is the state was going to hold us to their gross area baseline, we would have to build Buckingham at approximately eighty-three thousand square feet, and Berlin Intermediate at eighty-eight. Our conceptual plan for Buckingham, we were at a hundred and three thousand square feet, so we would have to cut twenty thousand square feet. Option three was to move Grade Six from Berlin Intermediate to Decatur Middle, and construct a pre-K three to Grade Five Buckingham Elementary. All north-end Grade Five students would go to the new Buckingham Elementary, so the school would again have about a thousand students, and the site couldn't handle it. Moving Grade Six to Stephen Decatur Middle would mean another addition at Stephen Decatur Middle, and possibly a feasibility study to confirm that the gym, the cafeteria, the media center, all the sports spaces were large enough for another three-hundred-and-fifty students, and we would have another three-hundred-and-fifty students on Flower Street and Seahawk Road in the morning and the afternoon, and that was not workable. Option four was to move Grade Six from Berlin Intermediate to Decatur Middle, construct a pre-K three to Grade Five Buckingham, and then add Grade Five to Ocean City and Shawil. And besides the other issues with Decatur Middle, Ocean City Elementary's low-rated capacity is five sixty-six, we would have about seven-hundred-and-sixty-two students in the school if we added Grade Five, and Shawil, six forty-two, and we'd have about eight-hundred-and-twenty-six if we added Grade Five, so that wasn't workable. We came up with an option five, which was to do the project without state funding, in preliminary talks with the county, we were looking at about fifty million dollars from the county, which would get us about a seventy-four thousand square-foot facility, which would mean we'd be cutting thirty thousand square feet from the conceptual plan. So, looking at all this, we went back and studied option two. The initial gross area baseline, the maximum that state would allow us to build was eighty-three thousand square feet, but we worked over a five-week period with the IAC, and they added some space for cooperative use based concentration of poverty, and they used the Buckingham 2032 enrollments, which are higher than the Buckingham 2029 enrollments, projected enrollments that we were using. So, all this worked out to the state coming up with about ninety-one thousand square feet. We're at 103, so we did a space study with the leadership team, the architect, Dr. Welch, and we cut about twelve thousand gross square feet from a hundred-and-three thousand square-foot school, and we're at about ninety-one thousand square feet, so we met. The IAC initially said it would be about thirty million dollars, provided for both Buckingham and the Berlin Intermediate combined, thirty million dollars to do both projects. Once we came to an agreement on the ninety-one thousand square feet, the IAC added concentration of poverty add-on, and maintenance effectiveness add-on, so instead of getting fifty percent of the construction cost, we're getting sixty percent for the first time ever. And they added a maintenance effectiveness add-on for Berlin Intermediate. Bottom line is, we went from thirty million to forty-eight million, nine-hundred-one-thousand for both schools. If you approve this recommendation, and then the County Commissioners approve it, we have some preliminary costs and dates, we would bid the new Buckingham Replacement School in the fall of '26 and start construction in May of '27. The building in sight is about fifty-nine-point-four million, the total project cost is seventy-three-point-seven, the state is going to provide twenty-five, seven-fifty-six, and the county would provide forty-seven, nine-forty-four. For Berlin Intermediate, bidding in the fall of '28, construction starting in May of '29. Right now, it's two years behind Buckingham, that will be negotiated between the County Commissioners and the IAC when they sign their memorandum of understanding, and you can see the other costs there. So, bottom line, we start at the bottom of this chart, in September '23, the state was giving us zero square feet for Buckingham, zero square feet for Berlin Intermediate, and zero dollars. Through April '24, they came up with about a hundred-and-seventy-two thousand square feet and thirty million dollars, and when we concluded our work with them with the work group, they're at a hundred-and-eighty-five thousand square feet and forty-eight-point-nine million dollars. The work group unanimously recommended to Superintendent that we go with option two, and the IAC is working on a draft of memorandum of understanding, which they hope they'll have to the Commissioners by October 1st. If that happens, we will do a presentation to the County Commissioners with Alex Donahue and the IAC on October 15th, and present option two, if that's your recommendation today, and the MOU. And the Superintendent recommends, the work group's recommendation of option two, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, Mr. Gordy?
Yeah, Mr. Price, one of the dates there was the bidding, I believe, in 2027, we had talked about the possibility, maybe having it happen in 2026, is that still?
No, we originally had it in '28, I moved it back to '27.
Okay.
The, the design process is about a year and a half, with our design, and then state's approval of every part of the design process.
So, we don't have to bring our crowbar to pull this up?
No, sir.
Any other board members have any questions? Dr. Andes?
I don't have any questions, I just, I just want to clarify, the recommendation today is to build Buckingham Elementary School, and then renovate Berlin Intermediate School.
The recommendation is to build Buckingham Replacement School, and proceed with the design of Berlin Intermediate, which first step will be a feasibility study, and during that feasibility study, a recommendation will be made to the Board whether we renovate the existing building or build a replacement school.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just want to, want to thank Mr. Price and the team for a lot of hard work and effort went into working through these details, making sure that we built adequate school sizes, and that we also received our fair share from the state, which has been something that's been lacking over many years of Mr. Price's career and beyond. So, again, my hat's off to you for all the hard work that we went through to get this project, these two projects together, and the amount of money that the state is actually giving to fund these two projects. Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Frante, if I can add one thing to the Board, never in our history have we seen forty-nine million dollars from the state, and I want to tell the Board honestly, Joe single-handedly took us to that level with the state, through continuous conversations with the IAC staff, continuous emails back and forth, it was a tremendous amount of time and energy, and we were really sweating this process, because we were not going to let Buckingham go, and the county had very clearly said to me and others that they were going to put in fifty million dollars, and that was, well, that wasn't even close to get us there, so we're very fortunate of Joe's knowledge and ability to get us to where we got, and I'm still in awe that we're at forty-nine million dollars from the state, because, again, that's more than Worcester County has seen, probably, if you put everything together, in the last fifteen, twenty years. So, I want to get this approved, to get this approved by, by the Commissioners, and get the IAC signature on the paper, and we, we've got a great thing, and we're going to be able to, to build Buckingham, and then go right to Berlin Intermediate, and then either, as Joe said, do a feasibility study and determine whether it would be a renovation or a rebuild. So, this is good news for Worcester County, and I want to professionally thank Joe Price for single-handedly bringing us to where we are today.
Mr. Gordy?
Thank you, Mr. Price. Thanks to Mr. Price. I also would just like to say that, as a member of this committee, Commissioner Purnell showed strong, really, really incredibly strong support for Buckingham Elementary, and I feel like her, I feel like her very vocal support was instrumental in helping us along the way, so, good Mr. Purnell deserves a lot of credit for her strong support, and also, Senator.
Senator Carosa.
Mary Beth Carosa is the Senator.
Yes.
The work group worked hard and did well. Commissioner Purnell put a lot of support in. Thank you.
And our work group, as you saw, Bill's thanking them, but also our three board members, and Mr. Gordy, Dr. Andes, and Mr. Smack represented this board on that work group, and worked extremely diligently and hard to get us where we are, too.
Okay, so, is there any other questions for Mr. Price? I need a motion to approve the FY '26 Capital Improvement Program and the authorization to forward the CIP Interagency Commission on School Construction.
Mr. Frante, you're approving the Buckingham Elementary School Work Group recommendation first.
Okay, I apologize. Yep, that's, that's what we need, we need the, the motion to approve the Buckingham Elementary Replacements Work Group's option two recommendation to Superintendent.
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Andes?
Second.
Second by Ms. McComas, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Price.
Thank you, thank you. Next item, Mr. Price, CIP?
Now, now I'm gonna go to the Capital Improvement Program, back to you, Mr. Tolbert.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Price for the FY '26 CIP.
Each October required to submit the CIP to the State Interagency Commission on School Construction. Our FY '26 CIP includes a request for construction funding for the Pokemoke Elementary Roof Replacement, and a request for design funding for the Buckingham Elementary Replacement School Project. The CIP also provides timelines and estimated costs for future projects, including the Berlin Intermediate renovation or replacement school project. The CIP includes the number and location of portable classrooms and enrollment projections through 2033. The Superintendent recommends Board approval of the FY '26 CIP and authorization to forward the CIP to the IAC.
I got it. Okay, any questions for Mr. Price? Can I have a motion to, and second, to improve the FY '26 Capital Improvement Program and an authorization to forward the CIP Interagency Commission on School Construction as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Buchanan?
Second.
And second by Mr. Gordy, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you again, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Next item, Stone Middle School Roof and Cedar Chapel Roof Replacement, Mr. Price, update?
Including your exhibits are Snow Hill Middle School Cedar Chapel Roof Plan and construction progress photographs. Construction began on June 17th, the roof replacement work was substantially complete on August 27th, the metal work is continuing after school hours through this week, and tomorrow we have a pre-final inspection for the project. Site prepare and landscaping are complete, and we have some photos before and after from classroom area. Front classroom area. Media Center area.
Very nice.
Again, the front classroom area. Cedar Chapel. And Cedar Chapel. And one photograph that is not included in your exhibits because I received it on Monday. I wanted you to see it. There it is. Drone picture of the, final picture of the work. And the Superintendent recommends approval of construction requisition number three.
Mr. Price, another project completed not only on time, but over the summer when kids were in school, and you made it, made it happen again. So we thank you for that. And Mr. Gordy has a question?
No, I was just going to, I just thank Mr. Price for, he has a way of getting these projects that generally just drag on. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordy.
Can I have a motion in a second to approve the Snow Hill Middle School and Cedar Chapel Special School Roof Replacement Requisition Number Three as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gordy?
Second.
A second by Mr. Buchanan? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Price.
Thank you.
Thank you for being you, Mr. Price. We appreciate it.
Mr. Tolbert, staying with you for the surplus update?
Yes, sir, Mr. Frante. The next item is FY '24 surplus update. As you know, we're in the middle of finishing up our FY '24 audit of our FY '24 operations. We're currently projecting an $800,000 surplus from FY '24 budget. We need $567,000 of that, $800,000 to come forward as revenue for FY '26 to keep less revenue neutral in FY '26 budget. The remaining $233,000 approximately, we're recommending that money be set aside in our fund balance and used for after-school, summer school programs in the current year. As the Board knows, over the past couple of years, our after-school funding was reduced in our budget because MOE and FY '24. It was requested to be restored in FY '25, and those budget cuts were not restored. So the Superintendent is recommending that they use that $233,000 for those after-school, summer school programs in the current year.
That has to be approved by the Commissioners?
Does it have to be approved by the County Commissioners? That's totally up to the Board if they want to submit that to the County Commissioners.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tolbert, while we're on this subject, I know that we received, we've received some grants for after-school programs this year. And there are, there are three schools, I believe, out there that don't have after-school, and we still don't have summer school. Is that correct?
Yeah, there are currently, we did receive some grants for after-school, summer school, but right now we don't have any funding for Ocean City Elementary School, Shawl Elementary School, or Stephen Decatur High School for the after-school programs at those schools for summer programs. Yes, sir.
Ms. Harris?
I, I guess I'm just a little confused. I thought that what we are voting on today would then have to go to the County Commissioners for approval after any surplus that the Board of Education receives or has, then has to get sent back to the Commissioners for this.
We will go.
In some years, we, in some years, we have not done that. In recent years, we have submitted things to the County Commissioners, one of those capital projects that we were doing with those capital leftover funds. So certainly we can go to the County Commissioners with this. Some years we have, some years we haven't.
We are going to ask them for their blessing on this. What I need is the Board to say we would like to do, use it for that, and then I can say to the Board, the Commissioners, the Board has, would like for us to use it for the thing, but we will ask for their blessing.
Okay. Any other questions? Can I have a motion in a second to approve the FY '24 surplus as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Andes?
Second.
A second by Ms. McComas. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Eventually, you still have the floor. Monthly Financial Report.
Mr. President, just so everyone understands, that $233 is one-time money.
Yes.
It can only be spent once.
Yep.
So it's one-time money. It can only be spent once. So just so everyone understands it, it's not going to be built into the budget. It's one-time money.
Right.
So we can't spend it on recurring costs. That's my point.
Recurring money.
That's my point.
Thank you, doctors.
Thank you for clarifying that, Dr. Andes. My last item is the August Monthly Financial Report with non-salaried expenditures of $1,556,763.45. The Superintendent recommends approval of the financial report as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Tolbert. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the August 31st, 2024 Monthly Financial Report as presented?
So, second.
Motion by Ms. McComas, a second by Mr. Gordy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Okay. Now I'd like to open up the floor, my fellow Board members, to ask you for any Board comments that you may have at this time. Dr. Andes? Mr. Gordy?
Just real quickly, I know we've been here a long time.
Mike.
Hi, Mike. Glad you could be here. I just want to give a shout out again to, to the Pines Cafe. My wife and I had the good fortune of having lunch there on the opening day, and it's a phenomenal experience, as Phil Cropper continues to exceed any expectations that you would have of a classroom teacher. And this is just a great learning opportunity for our students at Worcester Tech. And again, Worcester Tech continues to exceed any expectations. So a great shout out to the Pines Cafe. And also, this MCAP report that we just got, I want to, I just wanted to say to Mr. Taylor and his staff, leadership team, all the teachers, those numbers are phenomenal. Those numbers are sensational. And so on behalf of the Board, I know the Board would all say this probably better than I, but, but thank you so very much for what's happening there. We couldn't be more proud of it, but, but the students and the teachers and the parents have to be so very pleased with, with the work. And I will add that much of this work, especially in the last year or two, I mean, out COVID, and, and there's been some other little pitfalls along the way, as you well know. So this work is phenomenal. So thanks, Mr. Taylor and staff, and teachers. You guys are incredible. And along with all that, we just continue to expect you to be incredible. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordy. Dr. Andes?
Thank you, Mr. Frante. Over the weekend, I received a call from Delmarva Pets on Wheels, and I have a therapy dog, and they asked us to go to Stephen Decatur High School on Monday or Tuesday to help students process what was going on. So on Monday morning, at nine o'clock, myself and our dog, our therapy dog, went to Stephen Decatur High School. Think Rough Coat Collie, and for those of us a certain age, think Lassie. That's, that's what I have. We spent an hour and 45 minutes at Stephen Decatur High School from nine o'clock to 10:45. We would have stayed longer, but I ran out of treats. And when I run out of treats, he gets really ugly. But my point is, I just wanted to give a shout out to the student body of Stephen Decatur High School. I never saw in my entire career a more caring, more supportive, more understanding group of young people than I saw on Monday morning at Stephen Decatur High School, supporting each other, hugging each other, consoling each other, doing everything they possibly could to come together to help people process the tragedy that was going on in their lives. So to Mr. Seitz and the entire Stephen Decatur High School community, I commend you. I commend your students for sharing, caring, and loving each and every day, supporting each other. And if you ever need, let me know, and I just have to bring more treats. Thank you.
So I just want to add to that, because that was on my list to talk about, but I too, in the morning, on Saturday morning, got the word that the accident that happened to the Walsh family and to Tyler Walsh. And I just want to tell you that we live in an outstanding community, and I was able to attend the prayer on the soccer field last night during the soccer game. And what an outpouring of support, and what an outpouring of love for the Walsh family. And just people just were, they did a video. Mr. Dodson, thank you for putting that together. It's just, we live in an incredible community with a lot of incredible support, and we're really hoping that Tyler can come home and, and the healing process will begin. I also want to remind my Board members that I forgot to, because the Sheriff was in a hurry and he had to leave, I needed to get a motion to approve the Resource Deputy MOU as presented. So I would ask my Board members for a motion to approve the School Resource Deputy Program MOU as presented and a second.
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Andes and a second by Ms. McComas. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other Board report? Okay, my counsel makes sure I'm doing my job. So, thank you, counsel. Okay, now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Taylor for informational items.
And I just have two very quick announcements. One of them has already been made today to our Board. If you could put a placeholder on October 15th, we will be going with the IAC to the County Commissioner meeting at 10:00 a.m. to present the Buckingham Elementary School recommendation. And my assistant, Dawn, will let you know and confirm that once we have confirmation. But please put a placeholder on that date and time. Also, I'd like to report, as been pushed by a couple of our Board members, and I thank you for that, at my Eastern Shore Superintendent meeting on Thursday, our Board Retreat that we go to every June will be held in Ocean City this year. Thank you, Mr. Gordy and Mr. Frante for constantly reminding me. We will have that, and for future Board Retreats, they're going to rotate it, so it's not one place. And so all nine of our Eastern Shore Superintendent agreed, and so I'm going to work on getting the place, and we'll go from there. But we will only have to travel about 10 miles this year, Mr. Gordy. About a mile for you, Mr. Frante.
We had a real nice view of the Chesapeake Bay the last time we got off.
Forty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
We are having it in Worcester County.
Okay. The next upcoming Board meeting will be held in this Board of Education room, the Serrity Thompson Room. It's October 15th, 2024. And that'll be right here in the central office at Worcester Highway. The open session will begin at 10:30 and maybe a little later because we have the meeting at the Commissioners, and we'll consider to voting to convene into closed session under general provisions of Article 3-305B at the annotated Code of Maryland. The Board will reconvene in open session at 12:30, and the Board meeting information is posted on the website, www.westerkt12.org, located in our Board Meetings and Board Docs. And now I'd like to ask my Board members for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Andes?
Second.
A second by Ms. McComas. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.